Thank you and good morning, everyone, and welcome to the June 2021 regularly scheduled CalSTRS board meeting. It's nice to see everyone. Staff can please take the roll, please.
Sure. Ms. Bradford?
Here.
Ms. Hika? Mr. Prasan?
Here.
Ms. Erdin?
Here.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Here.
For the Director of Finance, Ms. Miller?
Here.
For the State Treasurer, Mr. Ruffino?
Present.
For the Superintendent of Public Instruction, Mr. Yamanaka?
Here.
Controller Yi?
Here.
Chairperson Keely, have a call.
Thank you. As we always do, just a brief announcement relative to our live stream meetings. At the end of each board item, there will be 10 minutes for public comment. Public comment is also livestreamed. Members of the public who are younger than 18 years of age, please mention that, and we will not livestream your comments. If there are more than a few speakers, the time will be allotted to not exceed 10 minutes at the discretion of the chair. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
Soundmuted.
Moved. Is there a second?
I can second.
Thank you. Without objection, the agenda has been approved. We're now going to drop off of open session and go into closed session. Thank you. And it's a separate login number. Everyone.
Thank you. You're on mute, Harry. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thanks, Sharon. Jack, are you with us?
Yep, I'm here.
Great. Good to see you this morning, Jack.
Morning.
This item is item five. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great. This is the annual Board Chair and Vice Chair Elections, and per statute, this is an annual requirement for our two officers of the board. And the second part of this item is actually the Board Committee Assignments. We've combined this into one item. You'll note on the Board Committee Assignments, we did not cede the board for the Compensation Committee in anticipation of your discussion later in the day, so that's not on there. It normally would be. But first, on the election, I might add, this is the 19th year that I have conducted this election without controversy or the need for a recount. So hopefully, I can finish my term here with you without any controversy. So I will first start with the election of the chair, and I would ask for a motion for a nomination. And I see Joy's hand raised. If you would unmute and...
Good morning.
Hi.
Good morning. Thank you, Jack. And yeah, I too want to make sure that we get through this election without controversy or recount. So you know, as I think many of us have recounted on these meetings previously and, you know, in conversations with each other, it has been a trying year. It's been a trying 15 months. I think we are all optimistic about how things are starting to open up around us, you know, in our communities, in the state, you know, given the leadership that we've demonstrated in California about how to get on track. But it doesn't discount what we've been through, I think, as an organization and as a board. I think our Chair, Chair Keely, has, you know, done a really remarkable job helping us to navigate through the challenges of the year, you know, through transitioning home and then starting to talk about how we manage the transition back into the office, leading us through, you know, a CEO search and starting off that transition and leading us with empathy and compassion. So it's my privilege to make a motion or nominate, I'm not sure what the right term is, Jack, to have Harry Keely serve as our Board Chair for 2021 and 2022.
Great. Thank you so much for the motion. And if I could have a second with a digital hand? I see Karen raised her hand right there. Thanks, Karen. Are there any other nominations to be made? Seeing no digital hands raised, I will close the nominations. All in favor of the motion, please say aye or nod or something.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations, Mr. Keely, on another term. All right.
Thank you, Jack.
Absolutely.
Those kind words, Joy, are very kind and generous. Thank you.
I will now open the nominations for Vice Chair of the Board for the coming fiscal year. And I see a hand from Denise. Please.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to nominate Sharon Hendricks for our Vice Chair. Joy so eloquently put it, of all the trials and tribulations of the last 15 months, and I appreciate that Sharon has been there to back up our chair every step of the way, and I would like to nominate Sharon Hendricks for Vice Chair.
Thank you, Denise. Appreciate that. And do I see a second from someone with a hand or motion here? I see Joy raising a second for the motion. And are there any other nominations to be placed before the board? Seeing none, I will close the nomination process. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Congratulations, Sharon. You are Vice Chair for the coming year.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you to everyone for the support. It's been quite a year and really appreciate just the collaborative nature of our board. So it's a pleasure and honor to help lead with Harry. Thank you.
Fabulous. Fabulous. Harry, back to you, and if there's anything more you want to say on the committee assignments, but...
Sure. Yeah, thanks. Thanks so much, Jack. Just a couple of things around the committee assignments. As Sharon and I looked at all of your requests, we almost were able to honor all requests for Chair or Vice Chair request. There were a couple of spots where we were unable to do so, and I wanted to provide you with some of our rationale and thinking in terms of how those assignments were put together. We, one of the principles that we believe strongly in is distributing leadership. So as a result, you'll see we have five different board members chairing committees. So we feel very proud about that. Second is a continuity of service. So where we could continue leadership roles, we think that continuity of service and leadership positions as Chair or Vice Chairs of committees is essential in terms of building some depth of knowledge around the issues within those committees, as well as building the essential synergy that's required between staff and the consultants that work with those committees. One of the competing, you know, trade-offs is how do you take people's individual expertise and background that they bring to the board and help that, use that to leverage our overall effectiveness? And we have to balance that along the lines of also tenure on the board, so how long people have been on the board. So in the continuity of service, there's the trade-off between the belief and the rotation of service. So there's these competing principles, but we wanted to give you some flavor in terms of how we made those decisions. We welcome your full participation, and we look forward to working in a spirit of collaboration and a purpose and a mission of service to our membership and to one another. So I hope that gives you some flavor in terms of how we thought about putting these committee assignments together. Thanks, Jack. Frank, you have your hand up?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a quick question, and maybe I missed it, and I apologize in advance if I did, but do we eliminated the Compensation Committee? I don't see the Compensation Committee on the chart.
So this year, the Compensation Committee is going to be, the comp issues will be handled within the full board. So comp will fall into the full board this year, although I envision perhaps putting together some small working groups to work on specific issues around compensation.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Mr. Ruffino. Jack, back to you.
That's actually all we had on that item, actually. We're ready for the next item, the actuarial valuation.
Thank you, Jack.
Yeah.
David and team? So this item, we have, this is our annual actuarial item, and we have our consultants from Milliman, as well as Rick Reed and David Lammerow's staff. This traditionally is held in May, but because of the obvious reasons, we're doing this in June. You have 16 minutes for this item, and I'm going to turn it over to David and the team.
So good morning.
Turn it over to Rick.
Yes. Good morning to the Chair and the Vice Chair and members of the board. So as Harry said, we are presenting the annual actuarial valuation. We've got Mark and Nick from Milliman here and David. So we're going to take presentation of this. If you have looked at the board item, you have seen our recommendation where we're not recommending any changes in the core contribution rate, and this may be a surprise to some of you due to the return that we had, we were having this year, and other financial items. We're recommending, we're recommending no change, but our unfunded is over $100 billion. And what we have done is asked that the contributing entities contribute a certain dollar amount. And we take that dollar amount, and based on our projection of payroll, we ask, we turn it into a contribution rate. So the contribution rate that we ask the contributing entities to contribute is based on projected payroll. And so we had done that in the valuation. If the payroll, if we ask, for example, 18% contribution rate, and we have $100 worth of pay, then we're asking to collect $18. So 18 divided by 100 is 18%. If we then come back and believe that the actual payroll is going to decrease from $100 to $90, then we would ask you for 20% of pay so that we can collect the same $18 in contributions. And so this is the principle we carried all the way through our valuation, and you'll see the effects today. So just keep that in mind, that when we're asking for a certain contribution rate, it's because we need to collect a certain dollar amount to help pay down the unfunded. So I'm going to leave you with those thoughts. We're going to turn it over to David to start the actual presentation today. So David?
Thank you, Rick. Good morning, everyone. Nice to see all of you. I also cannot wait to see all of you in person. I agree with the, I'm also getting zoomed out a little bit, but so we have, this is item six. We have six A, six B, and six C. So our plan is we'll go through six A first. As the board, we have three rates that are up for recommendation as part of six A, and then we'll deal with six B and six C together after that. So to lead six A, so all the valuations that were presented to you were prepared by Mark Alman and Nick Collier from Milliman. They're both here with us to help us present some of the information and also answer any questions you may have. So with this, I'll lead it over to Nick, who's just going to go over some of the key results of the valuation. So can we go to the next slide, please?
David, as you mentioned, you're going to do six A first and then six B and C. So we'll have a motion on six A before we go to six B and C, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
The last slide we have, we're going to put on the screen for you, the recommendation we have for six A, and then we can vote on it. Then we can move on to six B and C after that.
Thank you. And for the purpose of the presentation to my colleagues, we'll allow Milliman and staff to present their PowerPoint, and then we'll take questions afterwards. Back to you.
Thank you. So Nick, I will let Nick lead, present this slide.
Thank you, David. Good morning, everyone. David and I are going to do a little actuarial tag team as we present the key results of the actual evaluation of the Defined Benefit Program as of June 30, 2020. Obviously, quite a bit has happened since that date, which is not reflected in our evaluation report. We'll give you a quick overview of some of those post-evaluation changes later in the presentation when we discuss recent events. As of June 30, 2020, the actual obligation, the value of earned benefits was about $322 billion compared to the actual value of assets of $216 billion. That results in an unfunded actual obligation, the shortfall between the assets and the actual obligation of about $106 billion. Another way to look at, the assets are 67.1% of the actual obligation, which I think you're aware, we refer to as funded ratio. The funded ratio has improved from 66.0% in the prior valuation to 67.1% this year. This increase was primarily due to contributions made during the fiscal year to pay down the unfunded obligation, both regular scheduled contributions plus an additional contribution of about $1 billion made by the state. Under the CalSTRS funding plan, the funding of the $105 billion unfunded obligation is divided between the state and the employers. As you can see, the employer portion is currently $74 billion, and the state share is $31.5 billion. There's a small remaining, $0.4 billion unallocated piece, which is represented by the sliver at the top of the pie chart. This does not have any dedicated source of funding. On the next slides, next slide, please. We look at how the unfunded obligation is paid for. First, we look at the state's contribution. If there are no constraints on the state contribution rate, the calculated rate would be just over 9.5% of pay. Under board policy, this is the level percentage of pay projected to pay off the state's portion of the unfunded obligation, that 35 million I talked about before, by June 30, 2046, and is represented by the solid black bar on the left. The current state contribution rate is about 7.8% of pay, the base rate of about 2%, represented by the red bar on the right, and the supplemental rate, which was added in the funding plan of just over 5.8% of pay represented by the blue bar. Note that although the board adopted a 0.5% increase in the supplemental contribution rate with the last valuation from 5.8% to about 6.3% of pay, subsequent legislation froze the supplemental rate for one year at the 5.8% level, which is the rate currently being paid by the state. Under the education code, the maximum increase for given year is 0.5% of pay. To get closer to full actuarial funding, our recommendation is the board adopt a 0.5% increase in the state supplemental contribution rate to bring it to 6.311% of pay beginning July 1, 2021, for a total state contribution rate to the DB program of just over 8.3% of pay. If the maximum increase of 0.5% of pay is adopted by the board, this leaves a remaining shortfall of about 1.2% of pay represented by the green or possibly teal bar there. David, did you want anything on state contributions?
Yeah. So what I want to mention here is, if you look at the current budget for the state of California that's been considered by the legislature, and as Jack reported in his CEO report, the state is currently proposing to send to CalSTRS $584 million in supplemental payment that would more than cover that shortfall, which again shows the great commitment by the state for our funding plan, because I think it would be then the third year in a row that they're sending additional contributions to CalSTRS. So we expect that shortfall to be more than made up if the legislature adopts the current budget.
Thank you, David. Moving to the next slide. Moving to employer contributions. Since 2014, the employer contribution rate has had increases specified in the education code. The base rate represented by the red bar is fixed at 8.25%. The supplemental rate established by the funding plan and represented by the blue bar here has grown significantly over the period, consistent with the requirements of the funding plan. For the employers, these rates were specified through the current fiscal year and have not been subject to adjustment by the board. Note that in the last two years, the employers paid less than the rates originally established in the funding plan, but the state made up this difference. This subsidy to the employers is reflected in the light blue bar at the top. So for the current fiscal year, the employers are paying 16.15% of payroll, which is the 19.1% originally set in the funding plan, less the 2.95% subsidy. David, did you want anything on this slide?
Yeah, just to remind everyone that if you recall in 2019, when the state sent us $2.3 billion on behalf of the employers, at the time, it was intended to be, provide a combination of short-term and long-term relief. Then last year, through the state's budget, it was changed to provide rate relief over three years. So this year is year two of that rate relief. As you can see here, the state is paying 2.95% on behalf of the employers. And key is, next fiscal year, as we'll show you on the next slide, that rate relief is now going down to 2.18%. So even if we keep the employer rate the same, it's key because the employer, that subsidy is going down, which potentially will mean employers will have to pay more. So can we go to the next slide? So I'll take it over from here. So this year, actually, it's an exciting year for us at CalSTRS. It marks the first year in our history that you, as a board, can set the employer contribution rate. So this is the authority that was given through the funding plan when it was adopted at the time. And just to remind everyone, as per the terms of the funding plan, any adjustment we make, if we make any to the employer rate this year, they're limited to 1% of payroll. If we wanted to reduce the rate, the lowest rate we can bring it down to this year is 18.1%. And if we wanted to increase it, the maximum would be 20.1%. Just also, as a reminder, there is a cap in the funding plan for the employer rate at 20.25%. That cap does not come in play this year because the current rate is 19.1. Just as a reminder, that rate subsidy is 2.18% for 2122. So the state is still paying part of the employer rate, and this will be applied after the rate adopted by the board. Can we go to the next slide? And this sort of discusses what Rick talked about at the beginning of the presentation. When the valuation was prepared by Mark and Nick, it was based on the 2020 valuation. And generally, what actuaries do when we perform valuations is we rely on actual assumptions, and those assumptions are adopted by the board. And some of the key assumptions that went into the valuation, one of them was that the payroll was going to continue to increase every year at 3.5%. Another assumption was that we were going to earn 7% every year. Now, I want to talk about a little bit what's taken place this year. As you well know, it was reported to you back in January in Jack's CEO report, that we've seen, I think at the time, we were 26% ahead of schedule when it came in terms of retirements. So we've seen a huge increase in number of retirements. And we've stated to you, I think, back at that time, that although retirements by themselves are not expected to materially impact funding levels for the Defined Benefit Program, what we have been monitoring and watching for is what is that doing to the number of teachers in California? Because to the extent these teachers who are retiring are not being replaced, it could impact the payroll upon which we collect contributions. And we have been monitoring this amount, and what we saw the last few months is a decline in the payroll. If you compare where we are today versus just a year ago, our payroll has declined by about half a percent. Already this year, we're on pace to collect about $200 million less than what we expected just a year ago by the employer contribution rate that was in effect. Already this year, because of that declining payroll, we're going to have a little shortfall on the employer side. Now, when it comes to the year-to-date investment return, I'm sure you're all fully aware that this year is a great year. We are on pace to have a return well in excess of our assumed 7% return. But when it comes to our funding plan and the employer contribution rate in particular, our funding plan, we've mentioned to you before, it's extremely complex, and one of these, one of this complexity is we have, we have this counterintuitive result or implication when it comes to investment return, where when we earn more than seven, it generally translates into the need to have slightly higher employer rates long-term. So with the fact that we're on pace to earn more than 7% this year, that's another factor that's kind of indicating that the employer rate may have to be a higher long-term than indicated in the valuation report. So considering all of this, this is what led to us presenting to you three options when it comes to the employer rate. John, can we go to the next slide, please? So these are the options in front of you. Option one, on the left-hand side, is the lowest decrease possible under the terms of the funding plan. This would bring the employer rate to 18.1% by lowering the supplemental rate from 10.25 to 9.85. This is what was calculated in the valuation report based on the board policy, but also assuming payroll would increase this year and assuming we would earn 7%. Now, in light of recent events and what we see today, we've included two additional options in the agenda item. Option two would be a half a percent decrease, and option three is to keep the employer rate where it is at 19.1. And this is the option we are recommending in light of everything we've seen with the number of retirements, the decline in the payroll, and also considering, as we highlighted in the item, that California reported the highest decrease in enrollments in the last 20 years in K through 12, and all factors that potentially could lead to a, what we would call a lower payroll base or less teachers working California in the future. So we feel that the prudent approach this year is to keep the employer rate at existing level and keeping the supplemental rate at 10.85. Now, because of the rate subsidy, as we highlighted here at the top of the chart, as per our recommendation, the net employer rate, what called the net employer rate, would go, would become 16.92%. This year, the net employer rate for the employers is 16.15. So that would mean employers would have to pay to CalSTRS 0.77% more as a percentage of payroll than what they're paying this year. Now, we've done a lot of outreach before meeting with you to make sure all of our stakeholders were fully aware of this. Everyone is aware of our recommendation, so this is what we have for you. Next slide, please. The last thing I want to cover is, we've talked about the state contribution rate, the employer contribution rate. Equally important in our goal of reaching full funding are the contributions we collect from our teachers. And we generally look at our teachers, we usually separate them in two categories based on the benefit formula that applies to them. So teachers who were hired before 2013 are subject to the 2 at 60 formula. For them, the contribution rate is set in statute at 10.25. But for the 2 at 62 members, their contribution rate, which is currently 10.205%, it's based on a formula that is, that depends on something we call the normal cost weight. The normal cost weight is calculated each year through the valuation and adopted by the board each year. Now, as you'll see on the next slide, the normal cost weight remains around 18%, which means that it's going to translate into the member rate is going to stay the same at 10.2 or 5%, but the board needs to adopt a normal cost rate for the 2 at 62 members. So here you have it. This is our recommendation for you for this year. We're asking that the board adopts an increase in the state supplemental contribution rate. It would bring it up to 6.311%. We're asking that the board keeps the employer supplemental contribution rate at existing level of 10.85%, which would keep the total employer rate at 19.1, and with the subsidy, employers will have a net rate of 16.92%. And that normal cost rate for 2 at 62 members, 18.086%. The main thing you got to know with this is it will not result in any changes in contribution rates for those members. It will remain at 10.205%. That's all we have for you to present today. We all stand ready, the four of us, to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, David. And can you go back to the previous slide with the three options, please? Thank you.
Oh, the previous one?
The previous one. Yeah. The previous one, yeah. Okay, so this is essentially the decision point for the board is this slide. Is that correct, David?
When it comes to the employer rate, correct.
Thank you. Okay, let's open the floor for questions, comments.
See Bill's hand up, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Bill?
David and Rick, you know, again, and Millman folks, thanks for this great presentation. You know, I must admit, I don't get all the way through the Millman report, probably because I need somebody to explain most of it to me. But David, I think your explanation has been very, very clear and concise. But I do have one question that that I don't understand why an increase in investment returns impacts the amount of the employer contribution. Could you explain that in a sentence or two?
Yes, I'll try to keep it simple.
That's good for me.
But here's what I'll try to say to you. You have to go back to the history of CalSTRS. And when the funding plan was designed, and I think I may have to do that in more than one and two sentences, I'll try to be concise. When the funding plan was passed, the whole idea was to, the states said, we're going to be responsible to pay for any unfunded liability related to benefits that were in place before the legislative granted benefit improvements in the late 90s and early 2000s. And the employer was responsible for any unfunded liability related to any changes that took place after. And one of the main change that is leading to this counterintuitive result is a benefit improvement that was provided in the form of a redirection of member contributions. So for about a decade, members kept contributing 8% to CalSTRS, but 2% of that, of those contributions were deposited into the defined benefit supplement program instead of the defined benefit program. So the funding plan says, kind of requires the employer to pay back the defined benefit program for those missed contributions. So now those, and the way the funding plan works is now the the employers are responsible to pay back to the defined benefit program an amount of money that if we earn more than 7%, that amount of money they owe grows as well. So that is the main reason why when we earn more than seven, the amount of money that's owed to the defined benefit program by the employer grows as well faster, resulting in the need to collect more contributions. That's probably the shortest and most concise way I can.
So just in, 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 just so that I understand, it's really a, a reduction of an obligation that was incurred by virtue of the reworking of the plan.
Correct. And that obligation that they owe, when we earn more than seven, it also.
It triggers, it triggers the repayment.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Yeah, so Bill, here's a little bit simple example. If you loan me 10 bucks and you want me to pay it back to you, you also said, not only will you pay the 10 bucks back that, that you loaned me, but anything else I could have earned on the 10 bucks while it was in my pocket. So if I earn 10% on it, if it earns 10%, I owe you more than if you earn 2%, right? So would have earned 2%. So it's sort of the example that's happening with all of the, the benefit payments. So it's not only what was borrowed, but it was also when we earned more, the employer is obligated to pay more back for, for those benefits.
Thank you, and thanks for asking that question, Bill. Confident that you're not the only one who needed some clarification. So appreciate it. Before we continue, I believe we do have a member of the public that has called in on this item 6A. So Samantha, if we're ready to hear from that member of the public, I think it's one person, they'll have three minutes to speak.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, our first caller is Derek.
Good morning, Chair and members. Hi there. Good morning. This is Derek Lennox. I'm calling on behalf of the California County Superintendent's Educational Services Association, CSESAA, which represents the state's 58 county superintendents of schools. First, we appreciate all the early and often outreach from external affairs and from David in the actuarial office. This is a most welcome thing that we really tried to embrace and get the word out and make sure that David and the team have as many opportunities as possible to get in front of the employer field, given some of the recommendations here. So we appreciate that. Second, just wanted to share that on balance, we think that the more conservative employer contribution rate as recommended by CalSTRS staff is reasonable in this case. In most cases, we wouldn't support an action that unnecessarily raises contribution rates, as you well know. But in this case, the staff's recommendation, we think, is going to have a positive impact on future rates, including the large rate increase we're expecting in 2022, 23. And it'll also help provide employer budget stability, given the significant number of educator retirements over the past year. In future years, we do have a little bit of uneasiness, and this is sort of new territory for all of us, I acknowledge, with the board making sort of case-by-case decisions about where the rate goes, given that there's sort of a spectrum of allowable employer rates under the, you know, funding plan. It's not something that we're used to, certainly on the CalPur side, where they come up with an actuarial number, and that's kind of what it is. So look forward to having more conversations here as we move forward so that there's less uncertainty as we get to May and June about what the July 1st rate is going to be, so we can have some predictability. But I know that's a future conversation and my overall message is that we're supportive of the staff recommendation. And that's in large part due to the early and often outreach that happened from your staff. So thank you for all of that, and those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
That all, is that all, Samantha?
Yes, that concludes all the callers in the queue.
Thank you, Samantha. And thank you for dialing in, Mr. Lennox, and congratulations to the staff for your obviously successful outreach to the, the organizations that he referenced. So back to questions or comments about 6A from my colleagues and/or a motion on a recommendation. Betty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also agree with the staff recommendation. Really appreciate the thoughtfulness in the presentation. And I do think it will also help to just cushion some of the stress that might be anticipated going forward. So I really appreciate the recommendation on the employer rate. I had a couple of questions about just some of the ongoing engagement. And particularly, thank you for highlighting the decline in the number of active teachers. Have there been employer engagement on the impact of the lower annual salary growth rates? That's another, another piece of this.
I think as we've been doing all of our outreach to employers, and even for the last few years, we've been trying to make sure we educate employers as much as possible to the interaction between the fact that if we start to see less teacher, lower payroll, even lower salary increases, which could lead to low payroll, how it translates, it would translate to it. And not necessarily collect more, but having a higher rate to collect the same dollar amount. So and we will continue, we plan to try to have as much outreach as possible, especially in light of what Derek Lennox just talked about. Our plan going forward is to try to start outreach as early as we can to make sure everyone is fully aware of what we see going forward with respect to contribution rates and how it could impact the school and college budget.
Great, that's helpful. Thank you. And then I was just curious, how do you monitor active teacher employment trends in between experience studies? I mean, how is that done?
So we do, so every year we have, so we rely on the information that's reported to us. So once a year, so we, we monitor contributions coming to us on a monthly basis. So that's sort of how we know now that we're sort of below where we were a year ago. So that's one tool we use for our annual extract of membership data. So we, we can see, we rely on what the employers report to us. Forward-looking, we tend to rely on what is made available by the state. Generally, Department of Finance and they say they issue, for example, projections of K through 12 enrollments and so forth. So those are some of the tools that we use in deciding, especially in bringing recommendations to you as to what should be our payroll growth assumption. For monitoring, and I think we plan to have, in November, we plan to maybe spend some time as part of our risk report, maybe talk about more of the risks related to some of those key economic assumptions. I think payroll growth is, that's a key assumption that I think is often forgotten by most since the attention seems to be mostly on the investment return. But we can expect more of a discussion on this in November.
That's great. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Controller Yi. I don't see any other hands. I would move the adoption of the recommendation of staff. Thank you, Mr. Prasad. It's been moved by Mr. Prasad to move the recommendation made by staff.
I'll second that.
It's seconded by Controller Yi. Any further discussion, questions? I believe this needs to be a roll call vote. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, if you could take the roll, please. Jennifer, thank you.
Sure. Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks? Ms. Higa?
Yes.
And Mr. Prasad?
Aye.
Ms. Erden?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Uh, is Ms. Miller on?
I am. Aye, thank you.
Mr. Seiya?
Aye.
Mr. Yamanaka?
Aye.
Controller Yi?
Aye.
Chairperson Keely, would you care to vote?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. As we're moving to 6B, I want to recognize the state's unwavering continued support for the CalSTRS program. And secondly, clearly, there are some issues that have been raised in that report that we'll be discussing as David said in the risk reports, looking forward as we look at all the factors that impact the funding level going forward. So thanks very much for a good item. We'll go to 6B.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, we'll present the information for 6B and 6C together on slides. Because and then, but we're still going to, we can vote on them as separate items. Perfect. And I'll, I'll have Mark from the Millman to go through the valuation results for both the defined benefit supplement and cash benefit, cash balance program. Can we go to the next slide, please? And I'll let Mark take over.
Okay, thank you, David, and good morning to everyone. It's good to be with you, even in a virtual standpoint. We like to cover these two programs together because they're extremely similar. The difference between them is that the defined benefit supplement program is for the defined benefit members and applies to their compensation, which is not credited under the DB program. The cash balance benefit program, on the other hand, applies to the members who are not in the defined benefit plan, such as the part-time members. The funding of these programs has been very successful, largely because the benefits actually adjust to the level of assets available to fund them. The way that the, these plans are designed is they're based on an account balance, which accumulates while the work's, and then at retirement, the member is either paid the account balance or the account balance is converted into a monthly lifetime annuity. Now, the place that the benefits actually adjust to the level of assets is in the interest credit. It's granted every year, and that's where the board has a decision every year. Now, automatically, the minimum interest rate is credited, which is based on the 30-year treasuries. So last year, the minimum interest rate was 3.12%. So that's set up at a conservative rate, which we expect to beat over the long time. If the funding, if we have low returns in some years, then by beating that minimum interest rate based on the 30-year treasuries, these plans are able to make up ground. Now, if there is a reserve established and the board policy says if that reserve is, will be a standard deviation after additional earnings credits are given, then an additional earnings credit can be given, which essentially tops that minimum interest rate up to the valuation assumption. So for the defined benefit supplement program, that would be bringing the 3.12% up to 7%, a 3.88% additional earnings credit. For the cash balance plan, which has a 6.5% investment return assumption, that would be a 3.38% additional earnings credit. So let's look at the defined benefit supplement program first. We can see that it's 125%, 125.8% funded as of June 30, 2020. Now, one standard deviation, we won't have a one standard deviation reserve, that's another, you know, another level of, of sound funding on this is 13.1%. So if after giving an additional earnings credit of 3.88%, the plan is still above 113.1% funded, then board policy would say this is a time when that additional earnings credit would be given. So board policy says this is a time when the additional earnings credit would be given. Now, I want to reflect on a moment because, for a moment, because you may be thinking, wow, last year, this, the defined benefit supplement program was 125.0% funded. This year, it's 125.8% funded very similarly. And you may remember from the discussion last year that last year, the additional earnings credit was not granted. Well, if we look at where we were last year, that 125.0% was based on a June 30, 2019 evaluation, there had been some very bad experience. If we were looking at this time last year, we were kind of in the depths of the COVID financial recession. Assets were considerably down, and so the board decided that was not an appropriate time to give the additional earnings credit. This year is quite the reverse. If we go forward from June 30, 2020, the returns have been very good. So if we'll turn to the next slide, which is the cash balance benefit program, really, it's the same story. The only difference is that here, the investment return assumption is 6.5%. And here, the one standard deviation return on the assets is 11%. So what that means is an additional earnings credit here. We had the 3.12 minimum interest rate. If we add 3.38% to that, we get up to the 6.5% investment return assumption. See, what we're really trying to do here is say we, we're assuming long-term that we're going to earn 6.5%. We should be able to credit that if we've built up a reasonable reserve, which is seen as being that 11%, which is equal to a standard deviation on the assets. Well, again, clearly, if we lower the 121.7% based on a 3.38% additional earnings credit, we're still going to be above 111% funded. So again, a board funding policy would say that this is a time to give the additional earnings credit. And so with that, I'll turn it over to David for the last slide to summarize.
Thank you, Mark. And yes, if we go to the next, so you can see on the last slide here are, are recommendation near the bottom. So as Mark stated, both programs are funded in excess of 120%. And we have a board policy that has various thresholds. And based on the board policy, we meet the first threshold for, in both, in both instances to provide an AEC. So the first recommendation in front of you is for the defined benefit supplement program to provide an additional earnings credit of 3.88%. And then the next action for the cash balance is an additional earnings credit of 3.38%. And you can see in the last row to the table, what granting those additional earnings credit would do to the funded ratio. The funded ratio for the defined benefit supplement program would still be close to 122% and close to 118% for the cash balance. And that's all we have for you. So we'll have to answer any questions you may have on these, on the new recommendation.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, David. Karen?
Hi, thank you, David and Rick and the Millman. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that I asked the question earlier before the, the meeting, but I just wanted to know, a lot of times, it's confusing as to what these numbers really mean to our actual members, and when is it effective, and how does it, you know, why, why is it there? Can you kind of just kind of go over that briefly? Just so that, just for the, for the education for the people beyond me. So, thank you.
So when it comes to the additional earnings credit recommendation in front of you, this would apply, so it, it would be effective today. It would apply to any members of the, either the defined benefits plan program or cash balance program who have not yet retired as of today. So someone who retired yesterday would not be eligible for the additional earnings credit. So you have to be non-retired as of today. And then how it would work is since the valuation is as of June 30, 2020, is we would go and increase every member's account balance as of June 30, 2020 by those respective percentages. So if someone has, has $100 in their account on June 30, 2020, that account would increase by $3.88. But the key here is they have to be non-retired as of today. non-retired as of today. Now, just to give you some historical background, Karen, a few years ago, the board also had a policy to potentially grant, grant what, what were called additional annuity credit, AAC. Those were increases granted to members who had retired. I was not, uh, I think several years ago, uh, the board had a discussion and decided by adopting a policy to no longer grant additional annuity credits. Which is why now, as per board policy, all we are considering are additional earnings credit for non-retired members.
Okay, so, yeah, so today, if we approve it, is the, is the um, the actual day that it's in effect, not yesterday?
Correct. So someone who retires tomorrow will benefit from this. Someone who retired yesterday will not.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I just plug in there, Karen? Because I think our members are watching this meeting. And I would just say, it's something that they should be looking at their annual retirement report and, and checking that next year and looking for that credit. So I just think it's a good, I'm glad you asked that question, Karen, because I do think members are like, what does this mean for, for me? And it, it really only applies to actives in the DBS or in the cash balance. Um, so they should look at that annual report next year, right, David?
Correct.
All right. Thanks, Sharon.
Gail?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh, thank you to your team, Rick and David as well. So we, I, I do think this makes a lot of sense, but I also think sort of the way that we calculate this two-step process really speaks to how the state contributions and member contributions and investments are all linked. Because the reason that we give this additional benefit, and it makes sense right now without sort of impacting the fund and the funding status writ large, is because of how well we did an investment. So when you kind of take that delta, it allows us this opportunity. So last year, for example, we didn't support the, the increase. And this makes a lot of sense this year, just given how well the fund did. So I think it speaks to, to the three-legged stool that we really have when we talk about our, our actuarial assumptions and how important each piece is. So I, I'm happy to move both of these items when appropriate, Mr. Chair. But, but think it, it, it's a really good illustration of, of why each part of these three legs are so important. And, and how ultimately what we're all trying to do is actually increase the benefit to our members. And this is a good example of, of how that works. So I wanted to thank the team and make sure that that was clear and, and why we're able to do this now and might not be in the future.
Thank you, Gail. And uh, I think there was a motion to move both of those items. Per the recommendation by staff. I see Sharon, your hand is up. Sharon?
I was just gonna second Gail's motion and then also just comment on top of what Gail's mentioning, because I remember I was on the board, actually. Um, got this funding kind of bill through and the complexities that David, um, you know, it, it, there's a lot of complexity to the funding plan, but it's, um, it's working. And I think it was built on and predicated on kind of everyone having skin in the game. So I appreciate Gail's comments, but it really is kind of a joint effort between, you know, teachers, our employers and the state to ensure CalSTRS is funded, as long as there's, you know, public education in California. So I, I second the motion.
Thank you, Sharon. Moved by Gail, seconded by Sharon. Any further discussion or questions? The motion was to approve the recommendations for the DBS supplement program and the cash balance program, which are six B and six C in our agenda. Uh, Jennifer, if you could come on and take the roll, please.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yeah.
Mr. Prasad?
Yes.
Ms. Erdin?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Seha?
Aye.
Mr. Yamanaka?
Aye.
Controller Yi?
Aye.
Chairperson Keely, would you care to vote?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thanks for the report. Moving right along. It's gonna happen to us all someday. Lump does death benefit. So uh, my friend Alan says, in the end, we all die. So um, let's go into item seven, which is this item, which is the review of the lump sum benefit. And this is also David and, and Rick, our actuaries. I don't know who's kicking it off.
I will take it up. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is the annual item. Uh, so by statute, the board is required to look at this benefit on an annual basis. So this is a benefit, this is one of the rare instances in which you have control over a benefit that applies to our member. Uh, the law allows the board to adjust it annually. And the last time an adjustment was made, as you can see on page two of your items, was in 2018, when the board uh, increased the debt benefit amount at the time by 3.4% to make sure that the benefit would not be further eroded by California inflation. Uh, what we have presented to you today, although our recommendation, considering where we are funding level-wise, where contribution rates are, we've talked about that in our recommendation is to keep those benefits at the same level as they are today. But we have included options in the item, as you can see on page three of your item, to help you in case you wanted to consider increases. Just to put them in perspective, at the table you see on page three, uh, the, the first row in that table is the maximum increase you would be allowed to grant. And as per statute, the statute says where you have the right to increase the benefit to keep it up with California inflation. So with the, there was a desire to keep that benefit to be fully, uh, you know, inflation protected, if you want, since the day that this authority was granted, that's the first option. But then we've provided two other options. The last one in the table, 1.7%. That is, uh, the inflation we saw in California in calendar year 2020. So we just wanted to provide this as an option. And the one in the middle, uh, we always put that there more as a guide if the board wanted to look at different increases. Since it's a 1%, it's easy to just prorate these numbers to get a general idea of the cost. If there was a desire to increase this benefit. So with this, I'm done with my presentation. Again, our recommendation from staff is to keep benefit level at their existing level. Thank you.
Thanks, David. See if there is some questions. Any questions or comments from the committee? I do see your hand there, Karen. I apologize. It's up there in the left-hand corner. Karen?
Hi, thank you for the presentation and thank you for the, the pre-meeting um, information that I received from both, both the actuaries. This one really, um, this one really got to me because last year, we talked about it a lot. And last year, there was, there was um, a need or a sense that we needed to do some increasing. And, and I remember way back in 2018, that it had been quite a while since the increase from one, one um, one year to, I guess it was like six years or something like that. But um, and then I started to think about the actuaries and how I, I often call them fondly fortune tellers, because you, you need to, to project something that you really don't know a lot of the things that are going to happen out into the future, but you make certain assumptions. And so, and, and that's why, and that's why you, you do the job that you do. And we appreciate all the information that you provide to us. And then I started looking at the um, my binder that I got when I first got to be a member about the new, new trustee orientation and about the word fiduciary and what my responsibility is. And then um, in looking at that, I know that my responsibility is to the members and beneficiaries of this great organization. And, you know, it's been around for over 100 years. And it's been able to do that because of the concerns of all the trustees that have, have done their job. And, you know, part of that fiduciary responsibility is the duty of care, getting all the information, getting the skill, using the prudence to make those decisions. And then to be loyal, I have to wear one hat, no matter who appointed me, no matter who the other people are telling me what to do. The bottom line is the loyalty is to the members and beneficiaries of the, of CalSTRS. So when I look at, so when I look at um, the information and there was, we get some conversation, we get some input from stakeholders, members that, that are, that are really important. And, and this death benefit issue just kind of tugged at me because I, I really want to do something. And I, I don't want to do nothing. Because I want, I want to make sure that members are heard. And I want to make sure that um, members are acknowledged for all the things that they do and have done and will continue to do. And so I want to do my part as being a fiduciary. And I wanted, I wanted, I want to present um, an amendment or, or move an amendment or make an amendment or a suggestion to um, not keep or, or to raise the um, the increase. And first I thought, well, 1, 1.7 is good, but that's just keeping up with inflation. But I think to acknowledge that, I would, I would propose a full 5%.
So Karen's proposing a 5% increase to the lump sum benefit. Is there a second to that? See a couple of hands, uh, Sharon and Ben Gail?
I, I had my hand up before. I guess I should have, I'll lower my hand for now. I, I had a question, so.
Sure. Gail?
Likewise, Mr. Chair, I'll let, I'll let you.
Thank you. Okay, so uh, is there a second uh, to the motion by Ms. uh, Yamamoto for the purpose of discussion purposes?
It's, it's Joy. I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Joy. So Karen, you have a motion on the floor for a 5% increase to the lump sum death benefit. Joy has seconded the motion. I think you've spoken to your rationale. Did you want to speak more to it?
No.
Okay, thank you. So uh, does anyone else, uh, let's go to hands now in terms of speaking to the motion or other comments that you had. Gail?
I'll, I'll defer to the vice chair to go first, Mr. Chair, and then I'll go after her.
Thank you. Okay.
And, and I have no problem seconding the motion for purpose of discussion. And so, um, but I, I appreciate what Karen's raising, and I kind of had the same reaction in the conversation. I think partly because I'm working at our local right now and there's a, you know, COLA coming up, potentially, you know, 5% next year for faculty. And then honestly, just having my own sister passing and just being more conscious of the cost of, of, of burial and things like that, I think, um, quite frankly, it kind of came, came to, to home for me in terms of the details of just dealing with that and the financial costs of that. Um, and I also kind of, one of the things I continue to wrestle with, and this is no surprise to the rest of our board, is just the compensation conversations that we're having with our investment staff, which, again, have, have no problem compensating folks. But we tend, you know, we talk a lot about incentive pay and things like that. And then, um, you know, the, the kinds of amounts we're talking about here for our members for one-time death benefit are just miniscule compared to those numbers. And um, and so I think that's, that's some of the wrestling I've done. It's just we haven't made an increase. We made an increase, I believe, in 18, to 2018. And then I can't remember the previous time, David, do you know, the previous year we made an increase? It was quite, quite a while since we made.
Do you want to see?
2002, then 2018. So basically, 2002, then 2018. Is that, is that accurate? So I think just kind of in light of the incentive pay conversations we have with our own staff and those numbers. And then I think, you know, I, I just think in, in the balance of things, um, it just, to me, seems challenging to, to not look at this when it's such a, a small um, number. And so I just wondered if David maybe could talk a little bit about, with Karen's recommendation of 5% or 3% maybe, what would the implications be? Um, and what would be sort of the cons of us making, doing that in your mind?
But mostly uh, cons-wise, I think the only thing you have to be aware is that you're, it's, it's increasing the benefits. It will add.
Mr. Chair, I'm so sorry.
You all hear me okay?
No.
David, your, your mic is going in and out for some reason. We just keep losing you.
Not sure why. Maybe I'll have Rick answer this.
It's better now. Okay. So.
Yeah, I've tried to close everything. I was made aware that you may lose me. If you lose me, just nod.
No problem.
Rick can jump in. But mostly, you're talking about a adding cost to the program, which under the terms of the funding plan would be paid by the state solely. Because this has always been uh, on the state side of the unfunded liability. And 5%, you're talking about raising costs, the liability is the actual obligation by about $50 million roughly. And cost-wise, about like, an increase, uh, equivalent about 0.01% of payroll when paid through 2046. So they, again, uh, in the overall scheme of things, when you look at the size of CalSTRS, it is not a large amount, but it's still $50 million that will have to be paid over time. That's probably the only con related to it is there will always be a cost associated with this. You cannot take that away.
Cost is, is the state is bearing the cost.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Go to um, Gail.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I want to echo what um, the vice chair is saying in terms of the, the com, the, not only the conversations around compensation, but also the conversations around the collaborative model and kind of who really enjoys the benefits of the collaborative model. It's something that I know that Makita is working on and, and would love to make sure we, we have a better understanding of that. Because the collaborative model certainly was not intended to sort of go back into administration. And so I know this is a longer conversation for later, but I do think they stand in stark contrast, especially at today's meeting. So I completely agree with, with what the vice chair is saying. Certainly, there are concerns. I think this is, this is part of that three-legged stool. The state won't always be there. So relying on, right, like, that's why the, the, the ability to work together is so important. And I, I think I agree with Ms. Yamamoto that, that something is necessary, because I think when you don't increase at all, that's problematic. I won't, I wouldn't support 5%. I think it's, it's somewhat arbitrary, because this wasn't meant to be a benefit that kept up with inflation. I think you make a really good point, Ms. Yamamoto, that it also wasn't meant to be a benefit that never increases. I think 5% is not consistent with kind of any type of, of policy that we could potentially set, where we do look to something like inflation, like we do in so much of the rest of what we do with the state. I, you know, the, the, there will be, if not, if not full-out recessions, and I'm sure Mr. Lamro can speak to this, the risks to the fund are significant right now, probably more than they have been. A correction in the stock market would change the supplemental payments, not even a recession. Decreased average daily attendance is a very big risk as our teacher retirement. So what I wouldn't want to do is sort of increase one benefit without understanding kind of the risk to all of our members, especially our, our post-PEPRA members, so the, the 62, the 2% at 62. So those are all the, the balancing acts that I, I really struggle with. So while I think it's important that we indicate a willingness to increase this benefit, and I do appreciate Mr. Davini's letter. I thought that was really illuminating. I personally can't support 5% because it is entirely on the state. And I think that give and take with the state necessitates that every decision we make is, is incremental. And I, I, I'm afraid 5% doesn't feel incremental to me, although my opposition isn't necessarily to a benefit at all. It's just to that number specifically. I think if, if we wanted to look at a policy where this benefit, just like most of our benefits, keep up with inflation, that does make some sense to me. I just am concerned about the 5%, but I certainly appreciate you raising it, Ms. Yamamoto, and certainly want to recognize Mr. Davini for his thoughtful letter. Really appreciate that perspective and that understanding. And if at all, you know, if, if this motion weren't to pass, I, I don't want to make a substitute motion. I just, I would prefer to see the board going to a 1.7% that Mr. Lamro suggested in, in his write-up.
Thank, thank you, Gail. Bill and then Denise?
Uh, well, I just want to uh, thank uh, Karen for bringing this up. And, and, and I would just embrace what Gail has said. I think that there ought to be consideration of, of some, an acknowledgement of some increase. But again, I think 5% is arbitrary and, and probably should be. But again, I think 5% is arbitrary and, and probably should be looked at in the context in which Gail raised, uh, her comments. And so I would, uh, I'd be voting against this motion, would be willing to hear another motion made, uh, that would increase, uh, the death benefit.
Thank you, Bill. Um, next we have Denise. Denise, you're on.
Um, Karen, I was wondering if I could make a friendly amendment to the 1.7, so that there is an increase.
Okay, so that's a substitute motion then, uh, and you're proposing it as a friendly amendment. Uh, Karen, would, would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
To, to the 5%?
Yeah, from, from 5 to 1.7, which is the, Denise is proposing as a friendly amendment. And it sounds as if there would be support from Bill as well as Gail for that 1.7%. It, just procedurally, uh, Karen, the way that would work is it's if you accepted it as, as friendly, then that becomes the main motion. If you don't accept it as friendly, uh, there would be a second on that emotion as a 1.7 and we have to just procedurally go through a process. So that's really what we're talking about.
Okay, I accept.
Okay, so thank you, Karen. Uh, Denise has proposed a, uh, 1.7, uh, as a friendly amendment to Karen's 5% proposal. Karen has accepted it as a friendly amendment. That now is the proposed, um, uh, motion on the floor is a 1.7% increase. And was that seconded before? Uh, it was for discussion purposes, I believe, by Joy. So the motion on the floor now is a 1.7 increase to the lump sum, uh, benefit as, uh, just discussed. Uh, any other questions, comments? Uh, seeing none, I think we'll, we'll, uh, we'll call the question and go for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yeah.
Mr. Prazan?
Yes.
Ms. Erden?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Hi.
Ms. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Seha?
Hi.
Mr. Yamanaka?
Hi.
Controller Yi?
Hi.
Chairperson Keely, would you care to vote?
Hi. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Karen, can I just ask a que, question though, before we wrap this up?
Of course.
Is it possible, I guess because I feel like, you know, we come to this, I, I appreciated what Gail had to say about having it not be arbitrary and having it be linked to inflation or having some kind of benchmark to link it to. And I'm just wondering if staff could help with that moving forward so that, you know, we just, we have a linkage, because I appreciate what Gail's raising on the state side. And it would just be helpful in terms of making decisions as board members to have, you know, a guiding light, if you will, so that we're ensuring we're using our fiduciary duty and that it's not arbitrary, but it's based in, in, um, you know, mitigating risk to the fund, obviously, and to the funding plan. So if, if, if that could be something we could kind of put in place for the conversation, because it'll come up again next year and I just want to be thoughtful about this conversation moving forward. Not that we haven't been, but just, you know, you get the spirit of what I'm saying. And it looks like Joy has a hand up as well.
She does. Joy?
I just wanted, um, I, I support Sharon's suggestion to just have the staff consider, um, options, because I, um, I, I very much understand and agree with the point, Gail, that you and others have made about considering the impact to the state and on the fund in general. The 1.7%, though, if, if I'm reading it correctly from the staff write-up, is sort of the, the change in COLA, I think, from over the past year. And so it doesn't, it's, it's challenging, because we sometimes go multiple years between making adjustments. And so I, I don't have a suggestion as to what number would be appropriate, but I think knowing that we have that discretion, is there a way to account for that? You know, in, in future recommendations or options. Thank you.
Thanks, Joy. I'm sure the staff has that down as information requests. That's my full support as well. So we'll close the circle on this at the appropriate time. And, and hopefully bring back some suggestions for changes that would reflect, uh, the comments and understanding the pros and cons and trade-offs. Okay, thanks. Thanks for that.
Karen, Karen.
I'm sorry, Karen. Yep, thank you, Sharon. Karen?
I just wanted to just say thank you to the members and, and, you know, it's, it's too bad it didn't look like the full 5%, but I think to, to do something was better than to do nothing. And so I appreciate members and beneficiaries and, and hopefully everyone will understand the three-legged stool that's always in our, in the back of our minds. So thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, it's 11:00 AM and I don't know if Joyce Lynn is available, but, uh, we were scheduled, she is here. It, it, it's the pleasure of the board. Uh, my, my thinking is, is that we could probably get through the ledge rather than taking this after lunch and we can do this now. Without, is that okay? Great, terrific. Joyce Lynn, we're going to go right to you. You have, uh, some bills for us to consider.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members. Joyce Lynn Martinez, Director of Governmental Relations. I have four bills for you to take positions on and then, um, some brief updates on other pieces of legislation. Um, the first bill is AB 845 by Assemblymember Rodriguez. This bill creates a rebuttable presumption when considering disability benefits, that an illness related to COVID-19, an outbreak at a place of employment, was contracted on the job. This bill, for your information, also sunsets at the end of 2022, so it's a very limited-term bill at this point in time. The recommended position is neutral if amended, because CalSTRS actually does not provide enhanced industrial disability benefits that this bill speaks to. So it would have a, a very minimal impact, if any at all, on member access to disability benefits. And we are recommending neutral if amended, and the amendments would be to clarify that the bill's presumption only relates to systems that provide those enhanced industrial disability benefits in order to avoid any confusion related to our own disability benefits. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Keith?
Yeah, thank you. It's, it's less of a question. I just wanted to, to indicate that, uh, the superintendent would support the bill, mainly because, uh, although it is relatively, um, a minor effect, it still does cover some members who, who, uh, you know, with less than five, haven't yet, uh, vested in, in benefits. But secondly, um, having read the statute as it stands now, there's nothing really that would indicate, at least as far as we can see, that would, uh, indicate that, um, the issue of subrogation or something is, has been reversed. That is, that CalSTRS would not be able to do it. So at this point, you know, I, um, when it becomes appropriate, we'd at least like to, uh, make a motion to support, um, this particular bill.
Thank you, Keith. Um, Joyce Lynn, what is the staff recommendation?
Neutral if amended, to clarify that this applies to systems that have industrial disability benefits.
Got it. Thank you. And, uh, Denise?
I apologize if I missed it when reading this, but is there a cost associated with this? And do we have any idea how much that is?
Costs are mostly unknown, because we don't know how many people would be trying to take advantage of this or, or including it in their, um, requests for disability benefits. Thus far, we have not received any disability applications related to COVID-19. And again, since the bill is very short-lived with that 20, only through 2022, it, it's all fairly unknown. Um, we would have to be doing the tracking for that sort of thing, so it could increase, uh, administrative costs. Um, Mr. Yamanaka brought up subrogation and there's a workers' comp offset that, you know, more effort maybe have to go into doing work around those, even though, correct, this bill does not reverse those two pieces of our law.
Joyce Lynn, uh, just help me with process-wise. We're going to take each one. You, you're looking for, uh, the board's direction on each one of these bills, right?
Correct.
Okay, so is there any other further discussion on this, uh, specific bill? Seeing none, I just, I guess we'd entertain a motion to, uh, for the staff recommendation. Sharon?
I'd move staff, uh, I would, I would move that we approve, uh, staff approval, sorry.
Staff recommendation.
Thank you, Bill. I, not enough coffee yet. Thank you.
Yep, Gail?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just am saying that I'll abstain from all of the, all of the votes on this item.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Bill, moved by Sharon to, to approve the staff recommendation, which is to remain neutral on this bill. Seconded by Bill. Further discussion or comments? Without objection. Uh, Jennifer, we're going to take roll call for each one of these?
If you would like me to, or you, I'm, I'm, it consists.
Um, why don't, why don't we do quick roll calls?
Great. Uh, Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Hi.
Mr. Prazan?
Yes.
Ms. Erden?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Hi.
Ms. Miller? Abstain. Mr. Seha?
Hi.
Mr. Yamanaka?
Yeah, I'll abstain.
Controller Yi?
Hi.
And Chairperson Keely, would you care to vote?
Hi.
Right, the motion passes.
Yes, Jennifer. Joyce Lynn, back to you.
Thank you. The next bill we'll be looking at is AB 890 by Assemblymember Cervantes. And this bill requires an annual report on various details related to emerging or diverse asset managers that are part of our portfolio. The recommended position for this bill is neutral, because CalSTRS has been producing an emerging manager report for years and the impact of this bill is minimal. I definitely want to thank Assemblymember Cervantes. We have spoken with her office. She has taken amendments that, uh, make this bill even more workable for us, includes a sunset uh, on January 1st, 2028, and it limits the effect to future contracts. So we appreciate those amendments.
Thanks, Joyce Lynn. If there aren't any questions or comments on this bill, uh, entertain a motion.
Move staff approval.
I'll second.
Staff move, uh, Sharon's move staff recommendation. And is there a second by, who is the second? Is there a second?
Denise.
Denise. Okay, thank you. Moved and seconded to approve the staff recommendation. Jennifer, you want to take the roll?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yeah.
Mr. Prazan?
Yes.
Ms. Erden?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Hi.
Ms., Ms. Miller, abstain. Mr. Seha?
Hi.
Mr. Yamanaka?
Hi.
Chairperson, or Controller Yi?
Hi.
Chairperson Keely, would you care to vote?
Hi.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Back to you, Joyce Lynn.
Thank you. The next piece of legislation we're looking at is actually Assembly Joint Resolution Number Nine by Assemblymember Cooper. And this resolution requests that the President and Congress enact legislation that will repeal the government pension offset and windfall elimination provision from the Social Security Act. The staff recommendation is to approve a support position, which reflects your support of the actual piece of federal legislation, HR 82.
Thanks, Joyce Lynn. Questions, comments? Seeing none? A motion, please?
I actually, one com, quick comment. Um, I did just want to acknowledge, um, Assemblyman Cooper. I think he's been helpful with other, um, legislation that CalSTRS has brought forth. So I just wanted to do a public thank you, um, to Assemblyman Cooper. And then also, I think, members watching, this is just a perennial issue around the WEP and GPO. Every time I talk about it, I just try and keep a smile on my face. So I just want to lend support, um, uh, for the staff recommendation, but also just acknowledge that, you know, maybe by the time I retire, I hope earlier than that, that we can kind of, um, get this, these issues repealed, because it really ends up hurting our members. So, thanks.
Thank you. There's no truth that, uh, Jack has been be working on this in retirement, is there? Possibly. Okay. Um, seeing no other questions or, um, hands up, that's moved, moved by Sharon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bill. Uh, Jennifer?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yes.
Mr. Prazan?
Yes.
Ms. Erden?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Hi.
Ms. Miller, abstain. Mr. Seha?
Hi.
Mr. Yamanaka?
Hi.
Controller Yi?
Hi.
Chairperson Keely, would you care to vote?
Hi.
The motion passes.
Uh, Joyce Lynn, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to throw an audible in here and see if this is possible. There are, how many other bills do you have there for?
One more for position and then brief updates on, on a few bills.
Okay, so then why don't you do the, the one more for the position? Go ahead.
Thank you. And there's actually two bills. They're identical. They're at the federal level. And so as you know, one bill gets introduced in the House of Representatives and one in the Senate. So it's S 588 by Senator Feinstein and H R 1549 by Congressman Casten. And these bills establish a permanent climate risk advisory committee on the Financial Stability Oversight Council, or EFSOC. And EFSOC is made up of a variety of financial regulators. And what this does is it helps include climate risk and supervisory guidance and specified decisions and strategies and insurance regulations. So on several aspects, um, related to, again, financial regulation, just making sure that they consider climate risk. The recommended position is support, which aligns with CalSTRS' consideration of climate risk and advocacy for greater climate disclosure.
Thank you, Joyce Lynn.
I'll move adoption of the recommendation.
Thank you, Bill. Moved by Bill and seconded by Sharon to adopt the staff recommendations. Jennifer?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yeah.
Mr. Prazan?
Yes.
Ms. Erden?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Hi.
Uh, Ms. Miller, abstain. Mr. Seha? Mr. Yamanaka?
Hi.
Controller Yi?
Hi.
And Chairperson Keely, would you care to vote?
Hi.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joyce Lynn, a couple of updates you want to bring to our attention?
Yes, I did want to mention that the Chair and Vice Chair, with their delegated authority, did take opposed positions on AB 1019 and SB 457 related to divestment from Turkish investment vehicles. And the positions were taken for timely communication with the legislature and stakeholders. The analyses are included in the packet, so if you'd like to go through the details on those, it's available for you. And then just an update on our sponsored bills. We have three sponsored bills. AB 539 regarding our investment procurement process. And SB 634, our housekeeping bills, I wanted to let you know that those are moving smoothly and they've ended up in their second houses and are awaiting policy committee hearings. And then AB 551, which is our CalSTRS IRA bill. Unfortunately, the Assembly Speaker and Senate Pro Tem did issue a 12-bill limit this year for legislators. And so our AB 551 is on the enacted file on Assembly floor and it's made it to the floor. And so it can be a two-year bill and be taken up next year in January. But I wanted to let you know about all of those.
Thanks, Joyce Lynn. Don't see any hands, which, um, comes to the end of your report. Appreciate it. Appreciate all your work, preparations for the meeting. Thank you. Seeing no hands or, yep, everyone's good. It's 11:15. Which brings us right up to the end of our morning session. We're going to break until, uh, 1:00 PM. We're going to start. You can check in whenever you want, but, uh, the meeting's going to be, we're going to reconvene at 1:00 PM with, uh, the afternoon sessions, the bulk of which are the two compensation items. Any questions or comments for the good of the group?
Mr. Chairman, I want to commend you for getting us through on, in a timely way.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate that. Okay, everyone, how about, Alan? What are you doing?
Did you pop in to say hi before lunch?
He's on mute.
You're on mute. Alan?
No, I just, I was always there. I just didn't.
No, I just, I was always there. I just didn't want to distract you with my face.
Good to see you, but we're going to lunch right now. We'll be back. Okay.
You all at one.
See you one more in the afternoon. Thank you. Uh, we're back in session. We're on item eight. The next two items on the agenda um, have to do with compensation. Item eight is an action item and uh, numerous people appear to speak to the item. Uh, but it's a item that we address every two years. There are specific positions at CalSTRS that the board has some authority over setting compensation. Those positions will be addressed here today during this item. Um, and then item nine is the LTIP, the continuation of the LTIP conversation, the long-term.
Can I interrupt? It's item nine and item 10. So the first item is item nine. And then the next one is the LTIP is item 10, just for reference.
Yeah, nine, 10. Thank you, Sharon. So item 10 is the LTIP, and that is a discussion item. And consultants and our advisors will be looking for some direction. Certainly, there's conceptual agreement that we'd like to embrace an LTIP, but a lot of the details really do matter. So uh, that item is a discussion and information only. So when we start with item nine, which is action, and I'll turn it over to Melissa.
All right, good afternoon to everyone. So Harry, you did capture this first item. Item nine is reflective of the labor market compensation results. And as you mentioned, it is a review that we do every two years to make sure that um, the positions that the board sets compensation for is competitive to market. This year's review includes just, I want to highlight a few um, recommendations that Luis with GGA will go over with the full board in their presentation. Um, there are recommendations for salary range adjustments for a couple of the positions. And then there's also going to be a recommendation uh, for setting salary ranges and incentive opportunities. For, I think um, Jonathan, I'm not sure this is not the right presentation. Thank you so much. Um, then there's also going to be a recommendation for establishing um, salary ranges and incentive opportunities for two new investment management positions that are being created to support the collaborative model um, stra- uh, investment strategies. And there will be another component uh, to review incentive um, opportunity adjustments for investment services positions. And then finally, the results of LTIP levels as part of total compensation. So at this time, I'm going to pass uh, the presentation off to Luis to support the board in this review. Luis?
Thanks, Melissa. Um, we're going to just take team on this. Uh, Peter Landers from GGA will also have, be speaking briefly. And then also on the line is Michael Oak from McLoggins. If anybody has any uh, questions or kind of on a micro level to the detail, uh, Michael and McLoggins were extremely uh, helpful in, in the process in terms of the data bank of uh, of information that GGA then applied, the comp policy and the, you know, strategy for CalSTRS to uh, to make final recommendations alongside McLoggins. Um, so with that, I'll just kick it off. So really, there's just a handful of uh, key findings that we uh, looked at and found in this year's study. Again, we have a two-year gap that, that happens. This is not done annually. So uh, in terms of the base salary max, manual incentive opportunities, we are finding them to be generally competitive. Uh, other than the Deputy CIO and General Counsel, which we found to be just slightly less competitive, and we'll be speaking to a few recommendations around that. Um, we will speak to some uh, new bands uh, for the investment staff classifications. Um, we will speak to a bit more in terms of finding that the market pays higher for front office versus the investment services staff in similar positions. And as we've uh, you know, discussed over the years, uh, there is the lack of the LTIP, um, which we are uh, recommending again uh, to uh, be included as part of the overall LTIP design project. Um, having the LTIP recommendations in place, conditional on the overall approval of the plan design will assist us to do the next uh, follow-up steps in terms of more detailed cost analysis and scenario testing. Um, that we can do. But again, these would be conditional on um, the overall plan being approved. Um, but we are absolutely recommending more of an approach to have lower base salaries and more um, more on the incentive performance side in terms of compensation package.
Luis, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure that Jonathan is aware when you'd like him to um, move to the next slide because he's going to wait for your direction.
Sure. Uh, see, so I just covered, sorry about that. I just covered page two. Um, so Jonathan, if you can flip to page three. Um, really, I won't go one by one on these. Uh, uh, to, you know, everyone's had a chance to review it, and we have talked about this in the past. But, you know, really, we're looking at two major factors. One is, you know, making sure that we are able to retain and attract talent. Uh, and then really ensuring that we are able to implement effectively the collaborative model uh, in which the, the LTIP is uh, is a key part of that. Uh, Jonathan, can you please move to the next one? So Peter, do you want to just take over and I think just go right into the, the recommendations with LTIP? You're on mute.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone. Uh, pleasure to be here. Um, in terms of the recommendations, a lot of them just come out of the, the key findings. So really, just a couple of adjustments to the base salary midpoints for the Deputy CIO and General Counsel. And I'll point out that we're not.
Jonathan, we're on page, uh, next page.
Yeah.
There you go. Thank you.
Perfect. So you'll see highlighted in the light blue, uh, any recommended changes. And so for that Deputy CIO and General Counsel roles, you'll see slight adjustments made. I think it's important to realize these are to the salary bands themselves and not necessarily uh, the actual salaries that will be paid to the individuals in these roles. So uh, that's just an important uh, distinction there. But you'll see for the General Counsel, a lot of this is coming out of the fact that the General Counsel is not eligible currently for incentive pay. And given the historical philosophy, we're comfortable with that. But with that, you know, there has been a movement in the marketplace in terms of uh, movement of salaries and incentives. And so we want to justify, uh, you know, giving a little bit of an increase to the band to recognize that fact. Uh, the Deputy CIO, of course, is another area where there was a gap observed to market in the, the McLoggins research. And so we are also recommending an increase as well to that salary band itself. And then the other two are just representing um, the two new investment staff classifications and slotting them in appropriately based on the external market data, but also internally in a reasonable spot in the hierarchy of the investment staff at CalSTRS. Uh, so Jonathan, if you can move to the next slide, that'd be great. And we'll, I'll bypass this. A lot of this is the, the same. It's more just if an LTIP is not uh, put in place for certain roles, specifically the Deputy CIO and CEO, there will be some slight increases. But we'll focus more so on the inclusion of LTIP on a go-forward basis. So Jonathan, if you can move to the next slide. Same thing with this slide. You'll see very few changes to the annual incentive opportunities. The changes that are shown are really just for the two investment staff classifications that are new. And then you'll notice a differentiation at the Investment Director, Portfolio Manager, and Associate Portfolio Manager level between front office investment staff and the Investment Services staff. And through the research of, of Michael and the McLoggins team, and also our understanding of the marketplace, there have, there is a differential between front office and Investment Services staff. And so we wanted to uh, try and um, indicate and move the, the structure closer to market, uh, market practice. One thing that did come up after we had made this uh, presentation available to the board is we had some further discussions uh, with uh, with, with Chris and his team and then Harry and that. And there was, and we did get a little bit more nuanced view in terms of, you know, with the move to the collaborative model, also in terms of looking at some of the Investment Officer roles at Levels Two and Levels Three that are outside of the board's compensation setting authority and wanting to make sure that there's the proper internal equity uh, and sort of alignment with those roles. So you'll see for the Investment Director specifically and the Associate of Portfolio Manager levels, uh, we actually uh, have come, developed a revised recommendation that would see the Associate Portfolio Managers, instead of being at 25%, as indicated on your slide, moved up to 40% of salary. So they would still see a decrease uh, from where they currently are. But it would reflect a better sort of positioning when you can look at Investment Officer Two and Investment Officer Three positions. And then for that Investment Director role, instead of the 75% indicated, we would move that to 100. So again, it would represent a decrease to those roles, uh, to the Investment Services people in those roles. But it would also uh, maintain appropriate level of, of internal equity. So apologize that it's not specifically on this slide, but it is a, an updated recommendation that we think fits well, will position CalSTRS competitively, and also fit with uh, the internal equity concerns within CalSTRS itself. Uh, Jonathan, if you can push to the next slide. Here is the biggest, uh, sorry, you'll see lots of blue. This is where currently, of course, there is no long-term incentive in place at CalSTRS. And these are based on the results of the McLoggins research, GGA's uh, view of the marketplace and our understanding of where CalSTRS wants to go. These are the maximum LTIP opportunity levels that will position each of these roles at CalSTRS in our view competitively and reflect uh, the movement towards the collaborative model. And we, again, uh, you know, the idea behind this is by approving these in principle, um, we can do some additional stress testing and modeling of the proposed long-term incentive uh, coming up. So having, you know, a good sense of what these numbers could look like allows us to do some more detailed stress testing moving forward. And then, of course, within a few months, we can uh, you know, look to potentially approve that long-term incentive once the board has had enough time to really have the discussions with us, with Makeda, and other groups to finalize the long-term incentive. But these are the types and the values that would position, from a total compensation perspective, each of the CalSTRS rules competitively in the marketplace.
And the last comment I'll just make for the, some of the newer members of, of the, the broader committee now uh, that, that everyone's, the whole full board is dealing with compensation is th- these are all put together based on the board-approved compensation policy, uh, which indicates kind of the market positioning, which is around the median. And it, it leverages using the board-approved peer group also, just for clarification.
And I think, if I'm not mistaken, that, that is the, the last of the slides. So I guess we'll open it up to any questions that board members may have.
So for the purpose of this initial conversation, I, I would like for us to focus solely on the proposed increases uh, in the ranges for the specific positions that we have some authority over, that we address every two years. I would ask my colleagues, please hold your questions or comments on the LTIP until we've addressed thi- this first uh, action that we're taking. So can we focus in on that, please, and maybe just pull up a slide that looks at the specific positions and the increases that are being recommended?
So yes, Jonathan, that would be page five of the, the presentation would speak specifically to the base salary uh, changes.
So we're looking at the General Counsel, the Deputy CIO, Senior Investment Directors, and Senior Portfolio Managers. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And those, uh, so on the left-hand side of the screen of the current and on the right-hand side are the recommended in, increases in the ranges, uh, not specifically to the uh, the individual employees. Is that correct?
Correct.
Terrific. Thank you. So uh, if we could focus our, our focus and attention to these positions, either individually or collectively, let's open it up for questions or comments from my colleagues. And if there are none, okay, I do see a hand. Joy, and then Karen.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Harry. Um, and thank you to Luis and Peter. Um, so I have a couple of questions. Um, so what we have here, I know that there are specific proposals to increase the ranges for the, I think, for, well, for two of the existing categories, and then to set the ranges for the two new categories. Um, so if, if these are just setting the ranges, um, can you, can somebody just remind me, what, what then would happen if a decision were to be made to increase the salary of the incumbents in these positions, um, because there's now, you know, movement in the range?
Yeah, Joy, this is Melissa. So uh, for the CEO and the CIO, the board has uh, the authority to make those adjustments within the salary range. However, for all other positions, that is delegated to the CEO, and it's an annual review that um, presently Jack conducts with Chris for investment management positions and makes determinations on appropriate adjustments. So they're not automatic adjustments.
And are those adjustments um, sort of, you know, merit-based or maybe generally based on some of the criteria that's otherwise used to evaluate performance of the staff in these positions?
Uh, yes, I mean, that is obviously a component that's taken into consideration. Um, and also just, you know, taking into consideration the current climate. Um, you know, what is an appropriate um, step increase for a particular um, time? So.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, and then the other question I have is um, you know, for two, I think two, at least two of these positions, may, maybe the third. So for the Deputy CIO and the Senior Investment Directors, um, you know, I think um, Luis and Melissa, I had shared that I, I had a question about whether the pool that we use in our, or the, the universe that we use for the benchmarking. Um, you know, do, do all of those funds have positions that are Deputy CIO or Senior Investment Director positions? Um, you know, I, I don't know if those are, you know, commonly, um, commonly staffed in those funds or if it is not all. And if it's not all, I'd be interested in knowing if there's a, if that means that then there's a smaller universe that we drew from um, to, to print, you know, to, upon which to base the recommendations for the, um, for the salary ranges. And the reason I highlight those two positions is because um, you know, I think in, in most other organizations, that, you know, the CIO, the CEO, the Investment Directors, those are, are probably um, common among all of them. I just wasn't sure about a Deputy and a Senior Investment Director.
Yeah. So I'd like to, um, Michael Oak is with us, and he's, you know, obviously very um, familiar with the data that's collected. So I'd ask Michael to um, perhaps come on screen and share um, a response to Joy's question.
Yeah.
Thanks. Could you guys hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the um, I'll start with the Senior Investment Directors. So obviously, titles will vary across organizations, but that um, position is, is very common across your peers. So other, other peers might call it an Asset Class CIO, or a Managing Director, or any other variety of titles. But certainly, that position is um, far uh, very common across the other institutional um, uh, investors that we're looking at. Uh, the Deputy CIO is, is a little bit more um, mixed in terms of how people might view that position. So some organizations might just view it as um, it's like a single incumbent, number two to the CIO uh, from succession planning. It's, it's a, a very distinct position as, as you have it kind of slotted. Um, other, other peers in that group might view it as kind of a, a senior, if you will, of the, within the Senior Investment Directors and have it be embedded within that range. Um, and/or they might have multiple Deputy CIOs in terms of um, roles or responsibilities. So someone might be in charge of whether it's breaking up asset class responsibilities or one responsible for investments, one responsible for investment operations, or however they're going to break it up. So they, the Deputy CIO is a little bit um, less common than the Senior Investment Directors and definitely more nuanced in terms of um, their roles, responsibilities, and how things are, are allocated, et cetera. But um, in terms of like the data being used and what's being assembled, we do normalization across um, without getting too much into the weeds of the details, but there's um, lots and lots of really good data. And then if we ever have any questions. And then if we ever have any questions about it being like skewed because of smaller samples, et cetera, we have methods for squishing that over and making sure the recommendations are based on robust samples.
Okay, thank you. And your latter comment was what I was concerned about is just making sure that we were comfortable with the, with the volume of data that we had upon which to make the, kind of, you know, do the analysis and make the recommendation. So thanks, Michael. So Mr. Chair, thank you. I don't have any other questions. I think I, you know, I know we will get to the LTIP later. I think I just want to make a comment that I, I found it a little bit challenging to review and take action on this item when, when some of the recommendations were based on the subsequent item that we haven't made a decision on yet. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Let's go to Gail and then Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question just is your preference in terms of, I see the LTIP screen up here. I know it's base salaries with LTIP. Your preference is that we just talked about base salary now? I just want to make sure I'm, I'm having a hard time with the cadence of the discussion.
Yes, I would see, I would prefer that, Gail.
Okay.
Thanks for trying to accommodate.
Yeah, of course. So kind of three sort of general points, I think. One, I am, I am a little bit confused about the, how we're sequencing this because I do think one of the best market studies we can do in terms of salary is a job search that we just completed for the CEO. So I was really surprised to see that we spent any time on that salary because I think the, the process of searching for a CEO really bore out the fact that our salary was in fact competitive. And luckily we have a CEO that, that we've chosen and that will be really successful and has accepted the salary. So that's sort of my first general point. I understand this is every other year, but I still think it's important that we, we sequence those in a way that makes sense strategically for the organization writ large. So I'm, I remain really confused about that one because I think the best, again, the best market study we can do is who does and doesn't take the job. So that's one, really concerned about that. Two, I'm really concerned about the numbers we're talking about here. I still am yet to understand the problem we're trying to solve at CalSTRS in terms of recruiting and retaining high-quality people. I think are absolutely one of our strengths is that we have some amazing folks that work for us and the culture is really strong and people stay. When we continue to look at where we're going and especially with compensation, I think it's really important that we, that we do that, understanding kind of the problem statement. So with that in mind, I was, I was really surprised to see that we, that we went to the median. I was surprised to see kind of the assumptions and the way we view the market study. We seem to view the market study from outside only and, and then sort of always look only to Cal first, which I think is probably one of the worst comparisons, given everything that's been publicly stated there in terms of compensation. So I think I, I remain concerned that we don't take kind of a strategic or historical perspective and understanding first the problems we're trying to solve in, in attraction and retention of high-quality employees. And I just think, you know, we're looking at CEO, we just hired someone and we're immediately looking at a 10% change. And this was a comment I made earlier when we talked about the death benefit, you know, for the chief counsel, we're thinking that 20% change. And this, the deputy CIO, it's a 17.6% change. So, and I understand there's always conversations about where we sit vis a vis the state, but for state employees with whom we collaborate and for teachers, those ranges are between 2 and 3%. So I, I do struggle with the numbers, given the organization we are and the people we serve. And in order to have that be more solid, I do think that the inputs and sort of the way we operate a market study, I think are really important. So I, I remain concerned about that. And I, I'll say that I think in terms of better understanding the market study, again, I would not support any such type of change to the CEO until just given where we are in that hiring cycle. I would love to hear what the rest of our colleagues have to say about the, the chief deputy CIO and the chief counsel. And obviously these, these conversations are, are difficult because I again, think we have some of the most talented people in our environment. The last thing I'll say is I appreciate that Makita will, will do an analysis of the collaborative model and sort of how we're spending that money. What I did say vis a vis the death benefit is some of the benefits of the collaborative model are meant to accrue to our members. They're not only meant to accrue back into the administration of the organization. So I, I am concerned about sort of how fungible those dollars become and how many places we plan on spending those dollars. So those are sort of our, our general concerns. And I think that, that making sure that we continue to look at aligning our staff with the market medium for comparable positions is, is really important. I, I think that, that we also again, and again, and again, and I know we've had this conversation over and over, we have to consider kind of where we are and who we are in addition to all of those factors, which again, I don't see here. So with that, I'd be willing to consider some changes to the chief deputy CIO and the chief, the general counsel, but again, would, would prefer to see sort of a different strategy. I also do agree that base salary, it doesn't make as much sense as performance-based incentives like the LTIP. So that's sort of my general comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Gail, and thanks for summarizing right at the end because I was about to see if I was able to summarize what you were saying and you did it for us. So thank you very much, at least from my perspective, I got your high-level concerns. Karen.
Hi, thank you very much. I, I won't be able to, to be as eloquent as Gail, but I, but when I looked at this, I was concerned basically because one of the things is, Mr. Chair, you talked about, talking about the base salaries without the LTIP, but then the chart says with LTIP. So that was confusing to me. And then the, that was one thing. Another thing was the CEO salary. And I agree with Gail that because we just did a CEO search and the, if the, the salary was accepted, I didn't see, you know, I, I don't agree with raising that salary right now. And then another thing is the, the senior investment directors and the portfolio managers, I wasn't sure as far as organizationally, hierarchically, how that would fit in the organization and, and so it looks like their, their, their salary range is a little bit higher than the regular investment directors and the portfolio managers. And then I was talking, and then I was wondering about the incumbents and how that would play in all of this, the salary. And so one of the things is I wanted to be, have an open mind to hear what was being said. And so I'm willing to listen to see and hear what the rationale is for all of these incentives based on all the other decisions that we had to make. And to me, this is a major decision. The, the death, the, the death lump sum death benefit was a major decision. So having those two big decisions to be making within a matter of hours was, was really challenging for me. So I'm anxious to hear more about this, this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I'm going to go to Bill and to the extent that I took a complicated conversation and have made it more complicated because of how I wanted to process it, I ask for your grace. Bill?
I, I'm sorry, I may be missing something, but there's been a reference to the CEO's compensation, base compensation being changed in some respect. And I, I didn't see that anywhere. It hasn't been changed. It doesn't appear to have been changed here. The, the same salary is being proposed, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So the two comments that have been made regarding the CEO salary is exactly the same as it has been in place. Is that correct?
Correct. We're just, we're just, this is just the, making sure that the range stays within the competitive range to allow you the flexibility if you ever desire to, to change it, but we're not recommending an actual change.
There's no change, no change in CEO's comp.
Correct.
Okay, good.
The material.
Other than the LTIP, the LTIP will make a difference, obviously, but we're not talking about the LTIP now. We're just talking about the salary.
The bands.
Salary hasn't changed. I just want to make that clear.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Although.
Thank you, Harry, and thank you all. I, I wanted to make just one comment and I, I, I share Joyce's point that I find it hard to look at this in isolation, but I understand why we're doing that. And I also share the other points made because compensation, it's, it's difficult, it's complex. And all that I would say is that on the, on the competitive set, what I've heard is, and as the new board member, I've heard that we have a competitive universe, a comp universe that we believe is as representative as one can be. And I recognize there's, it's always difficult to do that exactly, but it's as competitive as can be both for, you know, where we are and where we continue to go with the collaborative model. Is that the right baseline assumption?
That's correct. There, there is a, again, this is not just a comparison to one organization. You know, you've got a, a, you know, well-thought-out peer group that's used and, you know, you're positioned based on the policy at, around the median. So you're not trying to pay top-tier by any means, but it is a very defensible, well-thought-out peer group that the board has developed in the past and is using for this, this process.
Great, thank you, Luis. And I just might share a perspective and I recognize we're not the private sector, but we, we have been and we continue to be very special in terms of our purpose, in terms of who we serve and in terms of what we do and how we do it. And I think in order to continue to attract and retain this world-class team that we have, you know, thinking, having those uncomfortable thoughts around, you know, how can we be both where we are today, but also where we're going? It is a war for talent out there and talent really makes a difference in returns and returns are critical, you know, to serving our members and continuing to be on the path to full funding as we expect to be. So I just wanted to say that philosophically and, you know, it's, it can be a tough pill to swallow, but I do support what we see here based on the data that we're based off of. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Go back to Gail.
I just, I, I think I'm confused by the way the materials then were laid out, Mr. Chair, because they're, in item nine, there were sort of three recommendations. Maybe we've moved off of that in regards to the CEO, the chief counsel and the deputy chief investment officer. And then obviously this, this chart is aligned with item 10. So maybe it's just the way the materials are presented, but I.
So to help.
I get what you're saying, Gail. I, I, I hear you. I'm just trying to make sure my comments are relevant. Maybe I'm, I'm sorry, I just know.
Yeah, Gail, go for it. I think you're, you're not the only one who's trying to process all of this. So go right ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was really in response to Mr. Prazant's question, just in terms of, of what we're talking about, kind, it's, it's all of the above in some ways because, is that correct? Mr. Navas or Mr. Landers? I mean, it's.
Our, our recommendation is that, so we wanted to, and I can see how it could be confusing. So we're, we wanted to show it kind of with the LTIP and without, in part because historically you've seen it without the LTIP. But our, our recommendation is that, that if you take an approach in terms of any decisions today, that it be based on the assumption that there could be a long-term incentive plan approved in the next three to six months. We therefore are, and, and we need some guidance from you in terms of, of some direction on, on the LTIP level so that we can do further work to come around, around the LTIP with Makita and the collaborative model. That being said, you know, as I said earlier, we, we are not, we would not recommend making the increases that come if you had no LTIP. We would prefer to see what is on slide five, which would be no changes whatsoever to the CEO salary range, in part for the good reasons that, that you've stated and Joy has stated in others. But also because, you know, the, the missing gap for several years now is really the, the LTIP piece. But our view is that, that the ranges on the CEO salary range and the annual incentive range is still competitive. And, and then the other adjustments that we're recommending, you know, they're, they're not, you know, they're still meaningful, but they're not to the double-digit number, numbers that you'd have in, in the other case. And again, these are, these are bans. What, what we really, for some of the newer board members, what we want to avoid is, we don't want, because you do this every two years, we don't want you to be in a situation that, that some organizations get themselves into where you leave the time gap to go too far out and then it gets really painful to make a decision, right? So we just want you to have the tools in the range to exercise judgment wherever you want, but fully agree with you, Gail, that, that taking one job as an example, which is the CEO, that that range, I think today gives you the, the tool that you need to be competitive and retain. That, hopefully that helps.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a follow-up?
Absolutely, go right ahead.
So can I just ask for verification then? So there's no proposed changes to the CEO's salary, but you continue to propose changes to the CEO's LTIP, correct?
For the, the LTIP in general, correct? We, we.
LTIP in general, but then there's also specific LTIP adjustments.
Correct.
But do you specifically, are you specifically recommending a change to the LTIP for the CEO?
An inclusion, eligibility in the LTIP, correct? Per market practice, correct?
So Gail, can I try to clarify something?
Please.
There's three, there's three areas of compensation that are in play currently. Currently, we have people's base salary and on slide five are the ranges. Then there's the incentive pay in which we have certain employee, members of our staff that receive incentive pay. The third component would be the LTIP, which we've yet to adopt. The incentive pay, there are no changes to the incentive pay recommendations that are currently in place. So the LTIPs, if we were to adopt it, would include an LTIP for the CEO.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. So Mr. Navas, I guess my follow-up to that would be what I heard you say is it would make sense to make no base salary adjustments, which is what we're discussing in item nine, and instead make only adjustments to the LTIP in item 10, correct?
For the CEO position, for the CEO.
Only the CEO position. All other positions you're, sorry, Mr. Prazant, all other positions you're recommending both to the base and to the LTIP. All these other highlighted.
Just, just the blue highlighted on page five.
Right, just the blue highlighted. Changes to the base and an additional LTIP.
And again.
One caveat.
When we say base, we're not saying, we're saying the range, the, the range of.
Right, yeah, sorry, the range, yes.
And the one caveat I will say is the general counsel, that role will, would not be eligible for incentive. So that role would not be eligible for an LTIP or a short-term incentive. But the other three roles that are highlighted in blue would be eligible for an LTIP.
Okay. I, I'll defer to Mr. Prazant, Mr. Chair, when, and then I.
I don't want you to defer.
No.
No, no, I just think, I just think that it's being made also too complicated here. And I, and I'm sorry, Luis, but, but, but as I see it and tell me if I'm just, you know, missing the point, we do not change anything on base salaries except with regard to those that have been cast in blue here on page five, okay?
Correct.
And that, and the only existing position that changes is the general counsel, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, and in terms of incentive pay, there'll be no changes in the range of incentive pay in the criteria, correct?
Other than for the, the decreases.
Yeah, and the decreases, right.
Investment services, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So when we talk about changing, Gail, when we talk about changing, when you talk about changing the LTIP. Yeah, okay. So when we talk about changing, Gail, when we talk about changing, when you talk about changing the LTIP, we don't have an LTIP yet. And then we're developing an LTIP. And so all of the questions you have about the LTIP compensation for the CEO or for any other position has even, you know, it's still to be, it's not even to be decided today, as I understand. Is that correct, Louise?
We basically need that there's a general guidance on the values so that we can do further analysis. But it all comes down to, at the end of the day, it's all irrelevant until you have the full plan approved down the line.
Right. No, the answer to your question is that's correct. Okay, so does that help, Gail? Because, you know, I don't want, you know, and I know where you're coming from on this. And I just want to make sure that we don't sort of get in front of ourselves too much, because I think we're going to have an opportunity to really deal with those issues, not only today, but even going forward. Because we're going to have to flesh out a lot of, a lot of the elements that justify the range of the LTIP if we adopt, if we move forward to adopt an LTIP.
Yes, it helps. Clarify. I agree with you that the materials are confusing. I guess my, now my concern is I don't know that we had the right information to treat this as an action item. I'm happy to give guidance. But again, you know, kind of the longer-term strategy on compensation, I didn't necessarily, and I generally want to be able to be helpful on an LTIP. So that is my frame of reference in terms of a compensation option for CalSTRS to use in the marketplace. I think you've made really good points on that, Mr. Navas, and want to be able to get there on that. I don't feel like these materials today were presented in a way to have any specificity around which positions should in fact be eligible for that LTIP. So I'm happy to provide guidance, but this to me is informational, and I think I'm concerned that kind of as the fiduciaries making these long-term decisions, these materials didn't necessarily prepare us for the discussion.
Just for, just for the, in the future, what would assist? We just will need, as part of the design, the ability to provide, you know, recommendations on LTIP levels. These were basically put together in the same way as we always have with regards to salary and annual incentives, you know, using the board's compensation policy and peer group.
Louise, I want to, I'd like to take a step back for a moment. And just focus on slide five, which is on the screen in front of us. And there are recommendations to make adjustments to the range, to these positions. And those adjustments are between 5% and 10% back of the envelope for positions that we have some authority over, that per policy, every two years, we adjust. If the top of the slide said base salaries with or without LTIP, I don't think the decision of this board would be any different because of the reasons articulated earlier relative to what other state employees are receiving in terms of enhancements. So the general counsel and deputy CIO are positions in which you, as our consultant, along with McLaughlin, are saying you're recommending to make some adjustments to the ranges. Those adjustments are between 5% and 10% for the minimum, medium, and maximum. What I'd like to know is whether or not there is an appetite amongst the board members to make those adjustments today. Then I'd like for us to have a conversation around what direction we need to give to you around guidance relative to an LTIP. We're not adopting an LTIP today. We're going to provide a lot of information and feedback. So that's how I would suggest we proceed. So I think that's a decision point we have to make. Do we want to improve and increase the range for the general counsel, deputy CIO, these new senior investment director positions and the senior portfolio manager? So if we could do that, I think for me, it would help keep things simple. So let me turn to Joy, then Jennifer, and then back to Bill. Joy? I think you're on mute.
I withdraw. I think some of my comments were made by Gail in that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Jennifer.
Thank you, Harry. And I have a quick clarification, and then a comment clarification. My understanding, it was stated, but if you don't mind, and thank you, just as a new board member, is that when we're simply looking at this, this is an exercise that the board has already done every two years, and that we are simply looking at where are our bands, mid, min, mid, and max, based on market comps? And because we only, we seek to only evaluate that once every two years, we want to have ranges that would be workable for us over that timeframe. I see Melissa's nodding. Yeah, great. And then within these bands, our actual can be anywhere. It can float anywhere within this based on how management, anyway, based on the decisions made. And it's just giving us the flexibility to work within these bands, which are targeted toward the median of the market at the time. Correct? Okay, great. Okay, that's very helpful clarification. And then the separate conversation around the LTIP, obviously, we're putting aside. My question then is, I'm also very much in favor of the philosophy of looking holistically across investments and investment services and looking at the positions that we have some oversight here at the board to set these bands. Are we, I just want to confirm that we're comfortable for the non-investment decisions, that the similar market comps are there to reflect organizations similar to CalSTRS in scope and service?
Yes. Again, it's a very detailed peer group.
Great. Thank you so much.
Bill?
I don't, I'm just trying to figure out a way to sort of relieve Gail of her concerns here, and I think I understand where she's coming from. If we were to adopt, since we're not adopting an LTIP today, and this is a process that we're going through with regard to the LTIP and what the LTIP may provide, would it be wise or would it be an option for us to adopt both the recommendations for base salaries with and without an LTIP? Not that we, you know, because then we might be able to holistically create, you know, a good policy with regards to comp, looking at it holistically. Louise, I mean, what about that? I mean, does that take us down the wrong path? But I'm just trying to find a way where we don't, where we have this information, we have, we're adopting base salaries with an LTIP. And it may be that the combination of the recommendations of the amount and the size of the LTIP may be such that the base salaries should be adjusted in some respect.
Right. That would be our only concern is that you actually have the higher base salaries approved and then potentially approve the LTIP, and then the total package, I think, is above the policy. You know, I think we would personally prefer to see the base salary range, the four-year proposed, approved, the decreases to the annual incentive plan ranges approved, but that, I think, make it more clear that the LTIPs here, that LTIP percentages that are being laid out are not final approvals, but that the board is allowing us to, for now, to use them as a placeholder for further analysis. And that down the road, once you have kind of all the information, they will be reconsidered and potentially either approved or not approved or decreased.
The salaries.
The, no, the LTIP, the LTIP percentages.
Okay, that salaries will be in place.
Yeah, we would prefer that you go with the lower base salary ranges.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Bill, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm so sorry. I really did think I got this yesterday. The only position on this slide that we're looking at now that will not be impacted by the LTIP, which could change things entirely, is the general counsel, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And the salary range we're looking at is up to a 20% increase from the minimum to the maximum. Have I done my math right? 308 for current to 455.
Yeah, that's the current rate, and then we're adjusting. So 308 would become 325 under our recommendation. So it would be, in that case, about $17,000 and $16,000 and $20,000. Yeah.
So our team actually did the math on this. So that's a 20% increase of over, actually, yeah, 20%. So I, then, Mr. Chair, because I don't think you can talk about the other positions without understanding the LTIP, which I think is a more important incentive, given the marketplace. If this is a market-based study, especially, and I'm actually more supportive of the LTIP for our investment teams, so I'm really supportive of that. I do think item 10, Mr. Prazant, is an action item. So I think we are in fact taking action today on the LTIP. We've just bifurcated this for the purposes of discussion. I would recommend, Mr. Chair, that we, if it's your pleasure, that we just, we talk about the general counsel as the only position on this sheet that doesn't have an LTIP. And then we talk about all the other positions in combination with the salary and the LTIP. I don't know how you feel about that. But I feel like it's hard to have this discussion on only one side when the LTIP will determine what should happen with the salary.
Sure. I think I certainly have a view on that, Gail, but I'd like to hear how others think about it, and if there's, you know, where the full board is. So you're essentially saying, just look at the general counsel and the ranges there because that position is not, does not currently have an incentive, and it's not recommended to be impacted by the LTIP and everything else to be done separately at another, further down the road.
Not necessarily even further down the road. I think it's item 10.
Okay.
I just think it's important to have the salary and LTIP conversation together for any position for whom they are eligible for the LTIP. And I think that's the next item. So I'm just.
Yeah, thanks. That's good. I think that works for me. I had someone else want to weigh in here. Just in terms of, I'm also having issues with the screen here and seeing everyone's faces, and there's a lot happening. So I apologize for not being really crisp with this one here. So Jennifer?
Actually, thank you, Harry. I see Melissa Owen Sharon trying to say something.
I was trying to grab Melissa quickly, and then we can go to Jennifer.
Let me go after that, if you answer my question. Thank you.
Perfect. Go ahead, Melissa.
Yeah, thank you so much. I just also wanted to ask, if I might, for the board's consideration, we do have the other recommended action, which are the two new positions. If that could be considered as well as an action item, along with the general counsel?
Gail, your thoughts on that?
Oh, I agree. I completely agree. I, because I see that they don't even have a base salary. We're just discussing the LTIP. That makes a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that addition.
Thanks, Melissa. Is there any opposition to what Gail's suggesting? Jennifer, I see your hand up.
I just had, one of my questions was what Melissa and Sharon just addressed. The other one I had, which may relate more as we move to item 10, is that the LTIP does have a range of zero to X. And depending upon how we define it and set it, that too might highly interrelate with what compensation structure we end up with here. So I just wanted to, it becomes very complex very quickly. And for that reason, I'm willing to look at it in isolation and then look both philosophically about an LTIP and get that dialed right. But at the same time, I have no opposition to taking the path that's on the table right now.
Great. Thank you. And thanks for that clarification about the potential LTIP of zero to X. It's a significant variable. So if there's no opposition to what Gail has suggested, and I don't see any hands, why don't, Gail, why don't you take a shot at potentially making a motion there and see if we have a second?
I don't know that. I'm happy to, Mr. Chair. I would certainly move that we that we approve the two new positions, the senior investment directors and the senior portfolio managers for the general counsel. And this is obviously painful, given that our general counsel is amazing. I would not support up to that 20%. I would like to see our ranges be more incremental. So if another board member wants to make a motion, I'd like to leave that up to the board for up to 20%. So if you're willing to entertain two motions, Mr. Chair, I can move now that we approve two additional positions of a senior investment director and senior portfolio managers.
Sure, that's fine. And while, that's a motion, and then if there's your second, is there a second on that, please?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. And while we're doing that, if Louise and Peter, please do the calculations on the general counsel, the percentage of range increase, what that would be as a percentage, so that when we get back to that, we have the accurate percentage increase, proposed increase. So moved and seconded for those new positions to create these ranges. Any further discussion or questions? I believe this is a roll call. So if we could have staff come on and take a roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yes.
Mr. Prazant?
Yes.
Ms. Erdin?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Hi.
Ms. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Mr. Yamanaka?
Aye.
Controller Yi?
Aye.
Chairperson Keely, would you care to vote?
Aye.
New motion passes.
Thank you, Jennifer. We could go back to the slide with the one remaining position, general counsel. And if Louise and Peter, if you could give us the percentage of range increase.
The midpoint, it's actually 4%. So it's a 4% increase on 384 to 400,000, which is about a 4% increase at the midpoint.
Then, Mr. Chair, I would be happy to move for a midpoint range only, but not to the max range.
Peter and Louise, can you do the calculation on the max, the 455 to 475, the 20,000? It sounds like it's about 4.5% to me.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mike from McGinn, and these proposals were originally from McGinn's presentation, so I have those handy.
Yes, please.
The minimum is a 5.5%, the midpoint is a 4.2%, and the maximum is a 4.4%.
Thank you, Michael, for coming on and giving that clarification. Gail, does that give you, does that give you any level of comfort? Gail, I think you're on mute.
I am because I'm having technical difficulties. It does. I still would, if I were to move, but I again defer to my colleagues, I would suggest we go no higher than the midpoint at the 4.4% increase, because I think that, if I understand it correctly, that is still within a reasonable range. And I think more consistent with the types of increases we see across state government. I wouldn't go all the way to the max on this one. I don't know if that's appropriate, but that would be my recommendation.
I can just jump in and make a motion to approve the general counsel increase. My understanding is it's been lagging for some time, and those numbers seem appropriate. So I would move that we adopt the general counsel, new ranges, staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any further discussion or questions?
Just clarification that the motion was to adopt the recommendation.
Yes.
For the general counsel.
The ranges for the general counsel. Yes, Bill?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion, comments? Okay, if we could take a roll call, please?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yes.
Mr. Prazant?
Yes.
Ms. Erdin?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Hi.
Ms. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Mr. Yamanaka?
Oh, it's staying.
Oh, Sting.
Controller Yi?
Hi.
Chairperson Keely, would you care to vote?
I would. I take a moment of personal privilege. I want to, for the record, acknowledge the work of our general counsel. His leadership to this board and his service to the sport has been outstanding in many, many ways, much of which is visible to us, much of which is not. And I've had the opportunity to work closely with him on numerous matters, and he's an outstanding public servant who is not participating in the incentive plans. And he's fully dedicated to the mission and purpose of CalSTRS. And we may all have the same minds and disagree on a few things, but his, his work speaks for itself and is much deserved. So thank you. I'd like that reflected in a minute, please.
If we could then go back to the next item, which is the, the conver, I want to, you know what? I don't know about you, but I thought maybe we could take a, a short break, maybe 10, how about you? But I think we'll take a 10-minute break, okay?
Yes, Mr. Chair, good decision.
Thanks. Be in 10 minutes, everyone. Thank you. Thank you. You can keep, I'm just going to go off camera, but stay online. Thanks. Welcome back, everyone. So we, we're going to finish out item nine, and then we'll go into item 10. Melissa?
Sure, thanks, Chairperson Keely. If we could bring the presentation back up, we just have a couple of more action items to go through on page seven. If, Jonathan, you could pull that up. Thank you so much. Luis is going to walk the board through the investment services incentive, as well as the two new investment management positions that you just established salary for. This is the incentive component of it. So Luis?
Sure. So Peter Laners had actually already referred to this, but just to refresh everybody's memory, we just need a decision made on the following. So the senior investment directors is the kind of new range classification created. And then we are making recommendations for decreases to the investment services area as outlined prior. Now, Peter, do you just want to walk through the, the refreshed percentages, please?
Yes. So while it says 75% of salary on this page, we would, a revised recommendation would have it at 100%, so still below the front office, but not as much of a decrease to the front office as what's stated on this page. The portfolio managers would, would remain where they are, and the associate portfolio managers, instead of 25%, would be at 40%. So they would still be below the front office associate PMs, but a smaller decrease than what's proposed on this page. And again, that is to reflect internal equity concerns within CalSTRS with similar and more junior-level roles, as well as the increased responsibilities that are anticipated under the collaborative model for these roles, which would indicate, you know, not making as large of a decrease as, as what's initially shown on this, on this slide.
So if, if it's okay, is, are there any questions for, on this part? Or go ahead, Sharon?
I guess I just, my question then, Peter, is, so you're saying at the time that these materials were, were put together, there was a change to now these number? I guess I, I just, I'm not following that, the logic of that. Because you were saying, it, it's different than when you guys were putting those materials together. And I'm just wondering what happened between when these materials were put together and now to change those numbers?
Luis, do you want to, you want me to take that, or you want to take? Perfect. So we had, we had just, we had not had the benefit of having further, further discussions and insights on some of the internal equity concerns within the investment staff when, when producing these, these materials. And so it was upon further reflection of, of those concerns, as well as a better understanding of, you know, the increased responsibilities of these roles moving forward under the collaborative model that tended, that has led to this updated recommendation that we brought forward today.
Joy?
Um, thank you. You know, I, I, we've been spending a lot of time on this item, and I know we still need to get to the next item to talk about the LTIP. So I'm not sure that that we have an opportunity to get into detail, but I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm concerned about having sort of the new information presented, you know, with a change, and appreciate Luis and Peter the explanation about what you, what you sort of learned between, or had an opportunity to learn more about between when these materials were first prepared and now. But, you know, I guess I, I'd like to better understand, maybe, you know, what some of the new duties are going forward, or what, what changes the roles to, to support the revised recommendation. I'm just, I'm not sure I understand that. So I, I just, I have some, maybe just a little bit of frustration about, you know, how we're, the, the information that we have to make some of these decisions.
Melissa, does it make sense for Chris to speak to that to the board, or would you like to?
I think it's, I think it's fine for Chris and or Scott to talk about, well, actually, it would be Chris, because he oversees this area and has a little bit more insight on the complexities and the responsibilities that are being placed on them. At the same time, the investment side is supporting the collaborative model, so too is the investment services area. So if Chris is available, he's, he can speak to...
Can I, can I just ask, Melissa, is this, you know, just getting the new information and being asked to make a decision to, to, is, are we, because of the timing with the new fiscal year starting, is this a decision that we need to make today?
It, it would be beneficial, because July 1 starts the new performance plan period, and it would, you know, of course, be very clear setting the incentive opportunity for that particular group. There would be awareness for that. Chris, I don't know if you...
Yep, I'm on. I, I think, Joy, the first thing I want to say is, you got to realize, this is a decrease from what these people are currently getting. They are currently getting the same levels as the front office. So they're watching this, and they're realizing, you know, that their incentive will be reduced. When GGA presented these, I felt they were far too low compared to where the staff is. And when I talk about the additional duties, the peer group that GGA is using to compare us with generally doesn't have as much internal management of the state funds as we do. And then when you overlay the collaborative model, we're embedding operations staff, which is here, the investment services staff, into the private asset classes, the private equity, real estate, and infrastructure to run all of their operations and track all of the investments. Those higher-level duties, we've been able to retain some really critical people. They're still seeing their incentive reduced from 120, or, I'll, I'll pick on the associate PMs from 50 down to 40. 40 would be competitive with what our peers are paying that do similar work of having co-investments and internal portfolio management. And then as far as the director position and the PMs, the, that's a career path, and I felt that it was appropriate to, to have a a lower incentive, but not dramatically lower, because these people are incumbents and seeing their opportunity already reduced. Hopefully, that explains it, but I can go into more detail in terms of the director position and the associate portfolio manager positions.
Um, so, Chris, that's helpful. I think I just, you know, and maybe this is just for, if we do this every other year, it's just to ask Melissa and our, and our staff to just sort of think about how we sequence and bring this type of information before the board, because I, I feel like we're, we're being asked to make pretty, you know, decisions that I understand are really important for our staff and retaining and attracting the talent that we want to, to be successful. And I don't take that lightly, but it's just, it is, it's hard to make decisions feeling like I'm not, I don't have all the information that I need. So thank you, Chris, for coming on to share that background.
It's Joy. Other questions? Or comments? Yep, Controller Yi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Joy, for the question, because where I really had a little bit of heartburn here is, I think, just hearing from time to time how there has been a desire to bring more parity to some of these positions, and then now to kind of look at a survey justifying that we're going to make adjustments potentially downward was kind of left some questions in my mind about exactly what you spoke about, just, you know, what are these positions about? There, and particularly as we're embarking on the collaborative model and, you know, are the, and, and much more is, you know, being expected of, of the staff internally. I think the recommendation of deferring the change for a year for the current investment services staff is fair. I think there's a lot that's going to be unfolding in the near, next, near term, coming up to where I, I, I don't want to take any action with respect to any change until we have more information about, more full information about what that looks like.
Thank you, Betty. Any other thoughts or comments or reactions to suggestion that was just raised relative to deferring the decision on these investment staff positions?
I just had a suggestion, Harry.
Yeah, go right ahead, Sharon.
Melissa, when you, Melissa, when you said, I mean, we have a July board meeting coming up, and I guess I just wonder, you know, it's the middle of, it's, you know, three or four weeks away. If, I, I don't, I guess I would opine, like, have our general counsel earn, earn his keep, I guess, to, to opine on this. But I just wonder, I know I'm having a little bit of, just kind of, I'm hearing it from several of us, and we typically don't feel that way. And so I think when I'm feeling that way, I kind of feel like I would rather have more comfort around information. And I think even just having the numbers change from when the, when the information was put together to now just seems a little odd, like, there's not communication happening with our consultants and staff. And so it just, so I just, I guess what I would wonder is if, if we could get more of the information board members might need to get, gain more comfort to be able to make a decision in July, if that's possible. Or other ideas for how to, to be able to kind of serve the timeline without feeling like we're kind of, we have to decide today in order to kind of, we want to, you know, be thoughtful about our staff, and we want to, you know, treat them well and have communication be clear. But we also feel, you know, like we need to do our duty and make sure we're making measured decisions based on information that we need to make those decisions. So.
Yeah, well, I think the presentation that we're having today, I mean, does serve as, you know, obviously, notification that there are some adjustments that are being considered. So I, I think that shouldn't pose a problem, but if Brian is available to provide guidance on that, if a decision was made in July to make adjustments, it's, it's close enough to July 1.
Enjoy, I see your hand up. Did you want to say something before Brian or after Brian?
Yeah, let's, let's jump right back to Joy, and then Brian can come on. Joy?
Thank you. So, so Sharon, I guess I, you know, we'll, we'll hear from Brian about whether taking this up in July would still allow us to, to have any approved changes be effective for the fiscal year. But I, I guess I also, you know, I, I heard in, in Chris's comments that, you know, we, I, I guess I just wonder if, if we want to take additional time even beyond July and not take this action right now, you know, given that we are continuing to, you know, understand what the impact of the collaborative model is going to be. I think even in the subsequent discussion that we have about the LTIP, we're going to be, you know, further discussing what that will mean for our organization, what that will mean in terms of, you know, how those, those savings and those improvements benefit, you know, benefit the system. And, and so I, I guess I, I, I wonder if we'd be well-served by postponing a decision, you know, until we, even longer, you know, potentially then until next year, to, to provide us more time to really look at this issue, since it, you know, it, it will have significant impact on our, on our staff. I, you know, I'm sorry if I'm out of line proposing that, but I, you know, I just, I, I hear a lot of, I, I just, I'm concerned about, about us having good information upon which to make a pretty significant compensation change.
Couple of hands are up. I see Bill, Bill, you have your hand, and then I'll recognize the controller. So Bill, and then Controller Yi.
Well, I can, I can appreciate the fact that this is a major decision, and, and some of the information has come to us a, a, a little tardy, and, and, and it's complicated stuff. One of the many reasons I've never wanted to be on a comp committee. But I must say, we, it would be interesting, you know, Joy, I, I'm going to have to disagree with you putting it off for a year. And I, and I think it's, it would be, in my mind, it would have an adverse impact on the collaborative model and the recruitment of, for the collaborative model. But, you know, maybe I'm wrong, but I'd certainly like to hear from either Chris or Scott on whether putting something like this off for another year is going to, in, in any way, hurt our recruitment process and the implementation, the constructive implementation of the collaborative model and, and some of the things that we're doing. So, you know, I can understand how we can put it off for, until the next meeting and clean up all of this information in a, in a format that is more understandable for everyone. But I'm, I'm heartily against putting it off for any longer. I think it would have an adverse impact. But I'd like to have Chris or Scott or both comment on that.
Sure.
Could I just jump in here? I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm clarifying what we're putting off. And I think, and I think what I heard from Joy and other board members is specific to investment services. As it relates to the two positions for the senior investment director and the senior PM, I, I guess the question would be, does the board feel comfortable adopting incentive opportunity for those two new positions today?
Thanks, Melissa, for that clarification. Great catch. So...
Well, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, I heard it, I heard it the way I think you heard it, which is to to not make any changes to the investment services positions, and then to look at these two new positions and create these incentive opportunities for the new positions.
Yes.
Let me, let me go back to, to Betty.
Thanks, Harry, and thank you for the clarification. And that was what I intended when I made reference to deferring for a year, was just for the investment services staff, not for the other, the other two. You know, I, I think what's troubling for me is that we can have any survey, kind of make any justification for whatever we want to do. But the reality is, I want to just understand just more about what's, what is happening within CalSTRS and the impact to our fund. I don't think we have comps that really are going to help us answer that question through a survey, but I, I do, I, I, I just do feel that deferring the change, at least for the investment services staff for a year, will allow us to be able to have a better understanding about, you know, just the, the scope of responsibilities that are going to be, you know, upon, you know, these, these steps. So, and that was the reason I thought it was a fair, it was a fair decision or, or recommendation.
Thanks for that clarification. I see that Chris has, had his hand up. And then, from the spirit of trying to be helpful, I'm going to make a suggestion. Chris?
But just, I'm trying to be helpful as well. The, the two new positions, there's nobody in those. You have to set the salary and the incentive, then it will be up to CalHR to help us create those positions. You have to set the salary and the incentive, then it will be up to Cal HR to help us create those positions. We'll be lucky if we're recruiting those, I hope. In early 2022. The other positions, investment services, I want to be clear, there are incumbents in all of those. They are currently getting what the front office gets. In this current fiscal year. So this is a reduction in their incentive. Based on industry comparisons. It's different than what you see here because. We I felt strongly that these people do different jobs and that GGA's recommendation was too harsh. And and that's why it changed from 75 to 100 PM at 75 and associate PM to 40%. It is is a reduction what they're currently giving. If you extend it for a year, that's fine. They'll get what the front office gets. Bill, your answer, does it hurt us in recruiting? In the recruiting, we're going to have to tell people that there that this is the current year incentive, but it could go down. And and I've made it clear, you know, and you have the power to change incentives every year up and down. We just haven't lowered them. So it's up to you. About whether you want to lower them now or into the future.
Thanks, Chris. We'll go to Jennifer.
Thank you, Harry. And Chris may have just. I was just trying to figure out if Chris really just answered my question, but I I really. I share the philosophy, as I mentioned a bit ago, on parity. With the investment services function and respect for what that is and how it's changing. I share the view that to be very thoughtful and intentional about scope and pay. For all of the positions, obviously. And I I wonder if we do defer this for a year. On the on the recruiting retention and everything. So I similarly had a concern about the extent of that. Reduction that was being called for. I thought that this was an interesting and. Thoughtful solution for it, but I recognize too that it's setting us up for the future within new structure. So I would just would be interested if others are interested and we move to a motion for something other than what's suggested. Whether we're comfortable that it that it will work with us if we defer for a year or what considerations we might take into account as we make that decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any other questions or comments? Let's see if we can. Just address. The deferring any decision on these investment service positions. And then we can tackle the two new positions separately, if that's okay with the group. Okay, so. There's a recommendation here, but I've also heard. Several board members speak to not making a change to the investment services. And we also heard from Chris. So if someone can try to. Put something forward. See if we can get agreement or. A vote one way or the other, whether or not we want to make a change. To the investment services only. Bill?
I would move the adoption of that recommendation. Made by Chris that was included in the. Just today in the materials.
Okay, is there a second? Joy, I see your hand up. Is that a second or do you have a different view?
I am not sure. So the recommendation, I think Bill's recommendation is making a motion. To move forward with the. With the incentive changes. As modified. That Chris referenced, but is modified after Chris's conversation with Louisa. Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. So I. I guess I was, my hand was up, Harry, because I was going to make a motion, but a slightly different motion. So.
Okay, so is there a second to Bill's motion? Bill, there's not a second to your motion, so. The the motion dies there. So is there someone want to take a crack at another motion? Brian, I see you online. Is there something that you need to, or you're just here to help us out?
Well, I'm always here to help you out, but at one point, I think Sharon asked me about this and so did Melissa. So I'd like to. To offer a couple of considerations, if you will. You know, I understand you stuck between the whirlpool and the rock here. I get that. But you're talking about potentially decreasing. Someone's compensation, and that's where the prior notice provision really is important. When you're increasing somebody's compensation, we, you know, the reasonable timeframe is not really that important. So I would not suggest that you move a decision on this to July. For the next plan year. I think that's that's not enough notice for people who would be negatively affected. The other thing is, I've heard, and this is, you know, as your lawyer, I've heard a couple of board members say, I don't feel like we have enough information. To make the decision. And then I've heard a couple. Ideas that maybe we should just delay decision until we get more information. And so I just wanted to point out that, you know, if board members feel like they don't have enough information to make a decision, I think it's a. It's a, it's an advisable course to to make the decision when you feel like you have enough information. So if the, and I recognize you bifurcated the decisions from the new positions to the investment services. But from what I've heard, there's. Board members don't really feel like they have enough information on the investment services. There's more to be determined. So. I just wanted to lay out those two considerations. Do you have enough information? And then can you put this in place with sufficient notice to the affected staff, to be fair?
Thanks, Brian. And then also, if I heard Chris say correctly, these new positions, they're not, there's no one in them. And it's going to take a while before they're filled anyway. So let me go to Controller Yi and then Sharon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to offer a motion to. Defer the annual incentive changes for. One year for the current investment services staff.
Thank you. Is there a second to the controller's motion?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. Controller Yi, do you need to speak to your motion? I think you've mentioned some things before anything you wanted to add.
I think what I will add is that during the year, what I'd like to see is. You know, just a lot more, maybe a little bit more granular information with respect to the. Scope of work of the investment services staff as overlaid on the on the survey. I mean, I do, this is where I've really had probably the biggest disconnect is just understanding whether we're really. Comping, you know, apples to apples here. And so just to have that information flushed out a little bit more, and particularly as as new. As new responsibilities may be upon this team of staff.
Thank you. Joy? And then Gail.
Thank you. So I, you know, I support the controller's motion and I, but I just wanted to make sure, because I think Bill raised a good point earlier about making sure that. Whatever action we took or did not take today doesn't impede our ability to move forward with the good progress we're making on the collaborative model. So, Chris, I just want to make sure that that we heard correctly what you said, that. If we defer a decision on the on the our consultant's recommended change to. Incentive comp for the the current. Staff, which would, I think, bifurcate the the staff at the, you know, portfolio manager and associate portfolio manager between. Front office and investment services. If we defer that, that will not negatively impact, that's the double negative, but that will not negatively affect our ability to recruit and retain staff because. We are, we are taking more time to evaluate whether a reduction in their incentive. You know, is happening and we may still, you know, we, I don't know where we'll end up in a year, but that that will not negatively affect recruiting or retention. For investment staff, you know, in general, and to support the collaborative model is, did we hear you correctly?
You know, Gail, I'm sorry, Joy. It would be, it it will have an impact when we're recruiting somebody for investment services, particularly the portfolio manager or the associate portfolio manager. The one, there are two portfolio manager positions, one is vacant, so we're going to recruit for that and and there are vacant APMs. We're going to tell them their current incentive is is 125 for the PM and 50 for the associate. But there's the potential it could be lower lowered in the future. Obviously, that's not a great recruitment pitch. But it's, it would express the reality. I don't know that it would hold somebody back. I think. It it would factor into their mind and it does give us time to consider it. There are seven, six incumbents in the associate PM right now, and and this year they'll have a 50% incentive. So that's why I just wanted to emphasize it's a reduction and how much we reduce it really does have an impact on it.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Joy? Yeah, Gail?
No, I should have lowered my hand. My my concern is the same. I. I'm not going to vote for this motion either. I actually do feel like we need more information. I would like to discuss this, however painful it is in July. I just am concerned that. I just personally am not clear and I understand there's been huge attempts to to help. Get some clarity, but I do think these are material decisions for which the information has been. For me inconsistent, so. I definitely don't want to hurt the collaborative model, and I would appreciate that analysis from the investments team, and I would love to be able to make sure it's fully understood by the time we vote in July. So to Mr. Barto's point, I don't feel like there was enough detail here to make a decision. And I would just commit to to really doubling down on my studying of the materials to make sure I've understood it ahead of a July meeting.
Thanks, thanks, Gail. So there is a motion on the floor to defer. The the decision. Controller Yi, was it just the investment services positions or were you including the two missed positions as well?
Just the investment services positions.
Thank you for the clarification. So defer the investment services decision. To the 2023 year. It was properly seconded. There's been discussion. Staff, we could take a roll call vote, please.
Or Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yes.
Mr. Prazan?
No.
Ms. Erdin?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Hi.
Ms. Miller?
No.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Mr. Yamanaka?
Aye.
Controller Yi?
Aye.
Pressing Keely, would you care to vote?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thanks. So remaining on this page are the two positions, the senior investment directors, the senior portfolio manager. And this GGA recommendation for the incentive comp for these positions, which have yet to be filled. If we could have some thoughts and commentary, questions, suggestions here that would be helpful. Gail?
Could we have Mr. Ailman speak to these to Mr. Chair, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thanks, Gail. So we're creating these two positions. It's part of the complexity of the office that it's growing bigger. So with the senior investment directors, Scott now has nine direct reports. When I hit nine, we decided that was too many and we divided it. So what we're thinking is probably only a couple of positions there, but maybe a senior director of public markets and a senior director over private markets. A quick comparison for you. At CalPERS, they created three deputy CIOs and filled two. Doing that same thing. We're trying to keep the structure a little better where there's a gap there. The senior PMs, what we're recognizing is you've got an investment director, I'll pick on Mike DeRay. He has over 22 staff now ultimately reporting up. We need to create senior PMs below that where you might divide the portfolio between. The traditional kind of partnerships we do and then the real estate operating companies. And so there would be probably one or two senior PMs in an asset class and then portfolio managers reporting up to them. And it's definitely, obviously, our directors thankfully don't turn over a lot, so it's also a career opportunity. For PMs. We have some portfolio managers and a couple of asset classes that have been portfolio managers and capped at the top of the range for almost 10 years. Not that we are just going to automatically move people up, but it's a career advancement opportunity for them, and it helps divide the number of direct reports to each of the directors. So we wouldn't create, real quick. Probably two, maybe three of most senior PM, senior investment director positions. If we get them from Cal HR. And then in the senior portfolio manager, we're thinking probably two. In not in every single asset class, but in in a lot of the asset classes. And again, it's the ability to to just divide the number of direct reports. And segment the portfolio into different specializations. Hopefully that helps.
Yes, thank you.
And if I could add, Mr. Chair, sorry, real quick. The structures, so you understand, you have the power to set salary and incentive. But Cal HR has the ability to create these positions in the state's system. Before we go to them with them, they want to know what the salary and the incentive is. So we need to do this first with you. Then we'll go to Cal HR, go through their process, which will take time to create new positions. Once all of that is done, then we're able to post them and recruit these and write job descriptions. So this is just kind of an initial procedural step.
Thanks. Thank you, Chris. Karen?
Thank you. Just a point of clarification. Chris, you you kind of said. The senior investment director and the senior portfolio manager. I always, I thought that each was one person. Are we talking about more than one person in each of those categories?
Yes, we're only envisioning probably two. To three senior investment directors, so they would be over the directors, over the asset classes. And we'd lump them by specialization. So probably an initial thought is public markets and private markets. Or growth assets, diversifying assets, inflation assets. The senior PMs would be over portfolio managers, so below a director, they'd report to a director. And in those positions. If you did two in asset class, it's maybe 10. That's probably more than we're thinking right now. But we would add to those over time. So one deputy CIO, maybe a couple of senior investment directors, then all nine investment directors. And then senior PMs and PMs.
Okay, so it would be like a person A and person B that's also a senior investment director. I mean, so we're talking about two people.
Correct.
Individual people, not. Not firms or anything else, but these are two full-time employees.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And they would report up, the initial thought is they would report up directly to Scott. You'd have one, for example, over public markets, so over equity and fixed income and those things, and then one over private markets.
Okay, thanks for the clarification because I, in my mind, I kept thinking it was one person. Thank you.
Karen, Gail, your hand is still up. Is that you? You're fine, okay. So it's a recommendation from GGA. As Chris outlined, these are for positions that still need Cal HR's approval. And. So I just saw a couple of hands. Gail?
I actually would make a motion to approve the recommendation.
Thank you. It's been moved by Gail to approve GGA's recommendation on these two positions. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Questions? Seeing none. Jennifer, if you could take the role, please.
Sure. Ms. Bradford? Yes. Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yeah.
Mr. Prazan?
Yes.
Ms. Erdin?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Mr. Yamanaka?
Aye.
Controller Yi?
Aye.
Terperson Keely, would you care to vote?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Ready to move to ten? Which is discussion around the LTIP to get some ideas, ask questions, give some direction. This is not the adoption of the LTIP. So there's no action that we'll be taking. What we're looking to get is guidance for Luis, Peter, and Melissa, et cetera. So why don't I turn it over to Luis and Peter and kick it off for us?
Luis? Thank you. Can we just pull up the, perfect, if we can move to the next slide, recommended LTIP design? So this is just the next slide, please. Thank you. So we're we're really going to try to spend most of this time allowing Makita to talk about the collaborative designs. I know that's really where the board would like to spend more time at this point. Just as a refresher in terms of the overall plan design. At the current time, we're looking at a performance period of four years. So that's also the vesting period. So you get a grant on day one. You, if you meet the criteria, you wouldn't actually see any type of payout until the first quarter after the fourth year. It's part of some of the work that Makita is doing. We are evaluating whether this makes sense to actually move it to a five-year period, which we we would also be fine with. Four is kind of the typical term for vesting. But the five years will give a higher retention level for the for staff and then potentially coincide better from an investment period perspective. The two measures that we're looking to incorporate into the LTIP design, one is the savings from the collaborative model. The other is an absolute total fund return performance. We've moved more away from kind of value-add type measures, which have been used in LTIPs, you know, twenty plus years ago. And just focus on delivering the the positive absolute returns. The LTIP award opportunities will depend on what we end up landing on. Presented some of those today as examples of where the market is based on your compensation policy of paying add around the median and based on the peer group that you have. And I think just to be very clear, in terms of the calculation, if we're we're right now recommending that you use for the total fund return the actuarial threshold of seven percent. If anything below seven percent is achieved over that performance period, the payout would be zero. And if you receive, if you generated over the seven percent threshold but didn't hit the the threshold under the collaborative model, the payout would also be zero. So we're definitely trying to make sure that we provide a market competitive LTIP opportunity, but at the same time, really looking out to make sure that the stakeholders see this in a positive light. So with that, I'm actually going to just pass it over to Makita so that they can really engage with you on getting your your views on the collaborative model design.
Thanks, Luis, and this is Steve McCourt. Alan Imkens here as well, but I'll be going through a couple of slides in this presentation. We're both available for questions, of course. And so if we can move two slides forward in the presentation, I think it is. So Makita was asked to participate in this project largely to ensure that in estimating the cost savings from the collaborative model that CalSTRS was approaching the cost savings estimates in the right way. And that once the approach was finalized, that the calculations for the cost savings were done accurately. So my my first message to you is we're very early on in this process of developing an approach to cost savings. But I did want to highlight just a couple of items here. First of all, as as noted on this slide and as you all likely recall from various meetings at the Investment Committee in the past, there are meaningful cost savings that are associated with the collaborative model. And those cost savings largely can be boiled down to the the size, scale, sophistication of CalSTRS as an organization being able to, in various ways, disintermediate asset managers in the asset management process. And in doing so, sidestepping a lot of the fees that other smaller institutional investors have to pay. The, in the 2019 cost report that was presented in November 2020, staff estimated the fee savings from the collaborative collaborative model excluding carried interest savings for the prior two years totaled just under $300 million. So the actual savings that you've already started to realize by investing collaboratively is is quite strong and it's expected to increase. In the the 2020 and 2021 business plan presented in July of 2020, staff estimated that by 2030, the collaborative model would be producing fee savings inclusive of carried interest savings of more than a half a billion dollars per year. And these are, these are annual savings. So this isn't new. This is, this is the rationale for investing in a more collaborative way and for reducing expenses and fees associated with investment activity as a large institutional investor. If we move forward one more slide. And this is another slide that staff had presented in the past, and I thought it was a good example of the the savings associated with the collaborative model. This, this is perhaps the the simplest expression of the collaborative model, which is co-investing to, as a way to get access to assets in the private equity area. The the bar on the far left shows the investment return, return of a co-investment that that CalSTRS participated in at four times invested capital. CalSTRS also participated in this investment indirectly through fund vehicles. And those fund vehicles had different fees associated with them and carried carried interest. And depending on the structure of those fees, the net return to CalSTRS was reduced in one case to three point six nine times and the other case to three point three eight times. And this is a good example because it highlights that the fee savings ultimately translates into higher returns for the same asset. And that's, of course, the point of the of the collaborative model. So what we can say for certain is that the the staff's pursuit and CalSTRS pursuit of investing collaboratively has a significant potential to save costs and to create a more invest efficient investment program over time. Over the next several months, we'll be working with with staff to think through how best to measure the cost savings for the purpose of the LTIP. As I mentioned at the beginning, we're at the early stages of looking at a variety of different methodologies. And and so we'll we'll be back at future meetings talking about the various options and ways to approach measurement of collaborative savings to the extent that that's a metric in the determination of the awarding of LTIPs. And and Luis, I might pass it back to you at this point, if there's anything else that you want to highlight in this presentation before before concluding.
No, I think I just sense it to the 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 time. I know we've gone over on the prior item. We have shown kind of the stress testing and some initial cost costing analysis. We will be doing further stress testing and further costing analysis in the months to come as Makita does their portion. But again, the goal here is to create a design that is highly defensible in in terms of of what we're trying to, the message that we're trying to send to all stakeholder groups, including the eligible employee population. Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if the if you want to open up any questions. There is one, we just do need to circle back on the DCIO because of the fact that we had deferred to item ten because that position was LTIP-eligible, but we never finalized the the salary range for that position.
We, I have a little note to self here that we're gonna, we were gonna actually do that and make sure we captured the desire and interest of the board on that issue. So why don't we stick right here to the LTIP? You know, the savings that you have in front, potential savings, cost savings are material. What I'd like you to do is go back to the slide that has the recommended four years, the seven percent, that slide.
And that's just the second slide after the cover.
Could you go to that, please?
The one before that.
One more, yeah, slide two, yeah.
Thank you. Let's stay right there and
Nope.
No.
Number two, slide two.
I think this is a good visual. If if my colleagues could please should opportunity to give some feedback and guidance. Your thoughts on the proposed LTIP? And there are some specific examples here in terms of its impact and and levers that would be involved in a proposed LTIP. So to kick things off, since everyone's a little quiet, I I'm supportive, I I would suggest and and would support a look at a five-year period. We use one, three, five, ten, twenty, and thirty-year periods to measure performance and performance against benchmarks. I think this added fourth year is complicates things. I don't know how others think about that. With the four-year rolling average of less than seven percent, no LTIP. Although I'm supportive of that in principle, I'm concerned and wanted to want, would like to be assured that there wouldn't be perverse incentives for the staff to take excessive risks to reach that threshold. So those are some of my initial thoughts, and now I see some hands going up. So we'll go to Jennifer and then Keith.
Thank you, Harry. One of the comments I I share is, well, first of all, very supportive in philosophy. Second, in terms of the term, I I concur with the idea that aligning it with the, one of the years that we focus on, that gives us enough runway to see the results of our collaborative model initiative, but also then perhaps with input from our consultants and our staff in terms of that balance between having it be long enough but not too long so that it really does what we want it to do with the team as well. And then also to think about what the sort of check and balance is on ensuring that we don't take excessive risk. The only other concept that I might introduce, if it doesn't get too complicated, is, you know, performance versus the market in some simple way, because we, our team can only do what the market serves up. Yet the idea that it is also anchored around the objectives and assumptions that we have for why we're here. So anyway, very supportive of the philosophy. Looks like a great approach and I would just suggest those things as we continue to put some specifics around it, because the devil is in the detail always in these types and ensure that the incentives have us pointed to where we want to go because that's likely what we'll see. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Keith?
Thank you. I have a couple of observations and a couple of questions. Number one is kind of following up on what Jennifer was just talking about. What is it that? What, I I'm not really quite clear. What is it that we're rewarding? We're talking about savings for, from the collaborative and performance measured in two areas. So performance supposedly is tied to what it what it is, the goal that that we're rewarding, so is tied to that. So savings in collaborative model seems more of an institutional structure. The very fact we have internal people versus and not having to pay the extra, the fees plus whatever other carried interest and other kinds of savings we've identified seen is is inherent in this model. And of course, we want good people, but this very structure seems to indicate that when you bring it in-house that the the savings come with it. I know that's overly simplified, but just from a conceptual standpoint. Then you have absolute total fund return performance over four years. So it seems like in one sense, there's a good, you're you're making it, you're making this long-term incentive, kind of a group, a group-based thing as opposed to an individual-based thing. But at the same time, it could be viewed as just merely one way of distributing just on the like, just saving some collaborative model, that just is a way of distributing the savings amongst some of these, you know, the staff. And and yet, we do have the other terms of returns to to the fund that helps the retirees, our members. So it it's just a question of, is this just a way to do that, kind of coming up fairly with a way to kind of distribute the savings between the fund and our members and the staff that helps us achieve that? Or is there an actual performance aspect to the individual that's measured by this? Or is the individual measured more by the annual, you know, the short term, whatever that is? Because that raises questions about four or five years, but what if the person is involved in an asset investment that doesn't pay off or pays off over twenty years? How do you tell? Maybe what is that performing? That's that's long-term. But yet, everything else, if you make it shorter than four or five years, it's just sort of a I guess, or an estimate that we can't get back later. If it turns out that the investment was ultimately not such a good deal, and it may not have been due to the individual as opposed to the market. So that's just one. Maybe I combined a whole bunch of things in one, one question, but that that may be something to help explain further. I mean, I'm not asking for an answer right now, but that's something that we may need some clarification on, or it would be good to discuss it just for purposes of background. The other thing, just to, yeah, because I know I don't want to take up that much time, but the whole concept of incentive compensation in the in the context of of a public entity is is real difficult and I understand the the problem, you know, the problems we've been having with the collaborative model and fitting it into a public public entity as opposed to just a private, because there are accountability and other kinds of issues that face a public entity that are different from those that a private entity would have. But it seems to me that there are other benefits from working at CalSTRS, assuming many of the people who are covered by this are civil servants. They're within the civil service system. There are benefits to the civil service system that I'm not sure that they have been included in calculation of total compensation or the conception of total compensation here. We have a long-term pension plan, you know, that has some benefit. I couldn't see clearly in the appendix whether or not that was factored in among other long-term incentives. But there's also civil service protection for those people who are not But there's also civil service protection for those people who are not, quote, uh, in what would be considered exempt from civil service or CEA-type positions. And that has a value, because you're, you're trying to, uh, in one sense, provide a incentive to people that otherwise, a monetary incentive to sort of make up for the fact that you're trying to perform, but you're an at-will employee. In the public entity, in the state perspective, you, you may not be an at-will employee, and there is a whole process that has to be gone through for underperformance, if you in fact underperforming. So there's some monetary value there that could be taken advantage of later on by someone. Um, so those kinds of things should perhaps in the future be articulated, that they are, may not have any bearing at all in this, may not have any bearing at all to the investment function, and yet they may or may not be realities too. So I, 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 I think it would be helpful to discuss that. Um, finally, just uh the concept of um the values that our system has, e- everything seems to revolve around money, cash compensation and total cash, and that's a necessity in one aspect, because obviously you have to try to recruit people. On, on the other hand, um, there are aspects to the workplace that some of which do not have a cash value. Our teachers show that every year, they go and teach our children. And they're not the highest-paid uh people in the world either. Um, and yet you have dedicated people who are willing to spend their lives to raising the children, to raising our future leaders. That, to me, indicates that there are other values to co- to coming to work for, for, even for CalSTRS, that there are people who can look at a job and find something, even though the pay may not be exactly comparable to those things, other um professions or things that they may feel that they're qualified to do. There are things that CalSTRS and the state and public service do provide um, that, that can't be, you know, I, I don't want to sound like Jerry Brown and talk about psychic dollars or things like that, but nevertheless, there is, there are rewards that go beyond money, and it would be hopeful that some of those people could be brought in, not a- and perhaps you want to encourage that. So it's not just the money, but it is an attitude, it is a service, it is a dedication that uh many public servants bring. So anyway, that's um for the future, perhaps to address those kinds of issues, and you don't have to talk about them now. So thank you.
Thank, thanks, Keith. There was a lot inside of that, there, there were a few questions and um some philosophical approaches to compensation, but I thought maybe Alan or Luis, maybe you could talk a little bit about how are you thinking about the mechanism, the tool that will be used to ensure that, in fact, any cost savings from this approach is truly the result of the CalSTRS collaborative model? And how you and the team are thinking about that instrument?
Let Makita address that since they're handling the, uh, the collaborative model piece.
Let, uh, let me try first, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, first of all, uh, this is extraordinarily complex with lots of moving parts, both on how to measure the value added and what the cost associated with just developing uh, this is, which is a system cost. Uh, there's all the infrastructure, there's a variety of components that we're going to be trying to get to the bottom of. Um, but just in terms of terminology, I don't view it as cost savings, I view it as value-added, and I think there's something very different. Cost savings, anyone should be able to do cost savings. Uh, and that will, in fact, the size of CalSTRS does create some cost savings, but that's going to be completely included in the methodology. So that will be discounted, the, the size benefit. The, the softer issues that Keith mentioned uh are, are hard to quantify, um, if not impossible to quantify. Um, and when I was making my notes, uh, I had psychic wages, because I was told at one point that that's what I should get benefits from. Uh, somehow or other, they never paid the rent. Um, but I, I was there, a- as Keith knows, uh, when psychic wages were on the table. Uh, and it's true. Uh, there is something beneficial to people who have jobs and careers that are really fulfilling and, and add something to society that's not monetary. Uh, but how to value that is, is enormously challenging. Um, what we're going to be doing is truly working with the staff to really come up with something that is both intuitive and transparent. And we're not there yet, we're not close to being there. There's an enormous amount of data that needs to be put together, there's an enormous amount of give and take on what should be the cost, that offset value-added, uh, and all of that's going to come back to you in a package that should be able to be communicated to all the stakeholders as the dish is reasonable, because if it's not reasonable, uh, it shouldn't be done. But I think, uh, Ms. Erdan raised a point which I want to underscore, and that is investment professionals generally live in a relative world. They fight against a relative benchmark, did they beat the S and P 500, did they beat the Ag Index, did they beat this index or that index? That's something that investment professionals have some level of control over. When you have an absolute measure, like seven percent, the motivation to do that is clear, since the system is not going to obtain its goals, why should the employees? But it, it does create a circumstance, particularly given the headwinds that many of us see in the capital markets, uh, that, that, that will be a challenge, and that's something that we're also going to have to address as we try to develop a, a methodology uh that meets the sniff test. I'm happy to add anything, and Steve might have some comments also.
Why don't we get to, Steve, you wanted to add to Alan's comments, or?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll hold any thoughts I have, let, let's have the uh.
If you can just stay on camera, Steve, so that would be helpful, so that I know that you're there as well. Uh, because I'm working off of this screen here. Thank you. Uh, Gail and then Sharon.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just generally, I am, I appreciate, Mr. Armkin, your points and, um, and, and Mr. Yamanaka, your questions. I'm really supportive of this approach. I do think, I will be really happy when we talk about this and salary together, because I, I do think that's where the confusion is. I do want to state for the record that I would like to, um, if we can, put it on our agenda. I, I still would like to talk about the Deputy Chief Investment Officer. I, I do think that salary is worthy of an increase, given sort of how we're implementing the collaborative model. What I would like to see, however, is that we actually begin, if it's, if it would, if the chair can consider this for our next meeting, actually having, taking, potentially looking at the LTIP as a way to incentivize that, that position. Because I do think that the way, and I've spoken about this, and I know, um, Paul Rosenstiel spoke about this previously, I think there may be a way to kind of simplify the way that our compensation works generally, and I think the LTIP is, is the first thing that we should do, and I would love to see it for the chief in, the deputy chief and, or the chief deputy investment officer. One, and then two, I do think a, a way of, rather than having a set of benchmarks for compensation and a set of benchmarks for our overall discount rate, I would love as a committee to really consider having a, a block amount go to the chief investment officer and the chief deputy investment officer for them to distribute to their direct reports. I think it may be a more honest way to make sure that we're measuring performance, and to Mr. Yamanaka's point, to actually decrease the risk, because it won't be so, so tightly tied to a, a short-term benchmarks, and oftentimes benchmarks don't work in the short term. So in summary, I'm really supportive, would love to potentially see a change writ large to compensation in the investment area, not, not so closely tied to short-term benchmarks. And then would love an opportunity at some point, um, to discuss the, the chief deputy investment officer salary, because I thought we would be able to do it as part of an LTIP discussion, not necessarily as a base salary discussion that we had in item nine. So I think I may have missed the boat on that, but that was my intent when I put it over to this discussion, was to see if we could create the incentive through the LTIP, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Gail. So uh, later on this afternoon, we'll be speaking about the work plan for compensation next year. I think a good place to place the, a concept of, um, you know, a pool that is then distributed by deputies to the CIO. It's probably, that's probably a good place for that to go, and get suggestions coming back. And then I made note here for us to reconsider what we did earlier. I don't think I, I'm not sure we're all in agreement, because we didn't adjust the salary range for DCIO, and I want us to go back and reconsider that, but we'll do that before we leave this item.
Per, I appreciate that. Thank you. And then if it's at all possible, it, just based on what Mr. Novas was saying in terms of having all increases more tightly aligned with the LTIP versus base salary, that's a really compelling argument to me, just in terms of, of the way the market works in general. So I, I, I am really supportive of that type of methodology for salary increases in general.
It's Gail. Sharon?
So I'd love to just wind this up and lend my support to the five-year um phase, and I think even what Gail just said just now, I think um, aligning with incentives and incentives, I think Jennifer is getting at the whole idea of like, let's incentivize performance, right? The value added that staff give us with that. Um, and so I support what, what Gail had to say about that piece. Um, but it sounds like you're, you're just needing direction from us as the board for moving forward with the LTIP, and I think you've heard in general that, that we as a board are supportive of the LTIP. I think, at least for myself, I've heard myself, Harry, um, I think the idea of supporting in a five-year range seems like kind of splitting the baby to me, it's long enough. Um, so I like the idea of that, that five-year range, and I like the idea of trying to figure out a way to make sure we're incentivizing for performance and not just reflecting the market. So um, with that, Mr. Chair, I don't know if we need any more direction from, from that, uh, but I would also support going back to look at the DCIO piece real quick before we move on. I'm mindful, we spent over two hours on compensation this afternoon. So it, it, it confirms how challenging some of these, you know, getting this right, which is what we want to do.
Thanks, Sharon. Um, I don't see any other hands. I was gonna call on you, Bill, there you go. There you go, Bill.
I just have one question. I- is, are we going to use the cost report to determine the savings? I mean, uh, i- is there, what, what, what methodology are we going to utilize? Have you given any of that a thought, Makita?
Yeah, the, the, that's what we're just in the beginning phases of looking at, Bill, so the, the, the cost report has um estimated savings based on one definition of the collaborative model, and we're just starting the process of looking at a variety of different ways to um, measure savings over time and um uh, the, ultimately trying to get to a definition that rewards uh staff for um, not the savings that accrue to CalSTRS simply because of its scale and size, but the savings that would accrue to CalSTRS because of its um, unique um, push towards a collaborative model.
And what is our timeframe? What, what are we looking at in terms of uh, when we will have uh, the analysis so that ultimately a decision can be made?
From, from Makita's part of this, uh, we've been discussing uh September timeframe um, as an aspirational objective.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Um, no other hands or questions, um, before we revert back to the DCIO salary ranges. Um, as we continue this conversation, um, I certainly would like to know, I think there's some uh the trade-offs between this rolling average of seven percent versus taking um you know, additional risk to achieve that versus a di- a different model approach, so maybe the board should see what the trade-offs with that are. Certainly, I think it would be important for us to stress test this range of zero to a hundred percent to have twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, a hundred percent, and see what those numbers actually pencil out to. I think we should know the trade-offs between a three, four, or five-year option uh relative to the returns eligibility, who would receive, who would be eligible. So a lot of these details, Makita and Luis Navas and his team will be working on. And encourage all of our, my colleagues to reach out directly to them to give additional input and thoughts or questions between the meetings. I think that would be most beneficial. So anything, uh, in closing, Alan or Steve, Peter, Luis, on this item?
No, we appreciate the input. I think this is very helpful.
Thank you. Alan, Steve, you okay? Good. Thanks. I, I would like us to go just uh back quickly to uh item nine, which is the DCIO. We made those adjustments in salary ranges. Um, but I believe we overlooked the DCIO, and I'm not sure if that was the intent of the uh, the board to do that in terms of the salary ranges. So uh, can we go back to that slide, please? The salary ranges for the DCIO?
It would be page five of the, the item nine report.
And is Michael Oak still with us? Did he uh, did he? Go to dinner. Is Michael still here? Are you at dinner on the East Coast, Michael?
I'm still here.
Good. Can, can you give us the um percentages for the uh, the proposed increases to the DCIO position? The minimum, the medium, and the, and the maximum, what that percentage would be?
Yeah, let me just pull up my report.
Thanks. These, I'm not sure we were all in agreement or fully understood uh, that we, we didn't take action on this, and that certainly was not my intention.
Page, page five of this report.
Yeah, so actually, these, uh, this is the one position that the recommendations are not copied from the McGlockin report, so um GGA will have to tell you where the, the changes came from.
Yes, so I, I'm happy to, to do that on GGA's behalf. So um, what Michael is referring to is uh, McGlockin had provided recommendations, assuming again, a, a salary and just an annual incentive. And to Luis's earlier point, um, you know, we wouldn't want to uh provide a, a higher salary now, and then, you know, come three, four, or five months from now, we put a long-term incentive plan in place and realize that with the higher salary, we've uh positioned the role above market. And so what we've done on this slide five is taken sort of a, a middle-of-the-road approach uh between where CalSTRS is now and the recommendations in the McGlockin report to recognize that there is a uh material uh gap uh for the deputy CIO to, uh, to the market data, but to reflect the fact that um, for now, we're, you know, anticipating in the future, having that long-term incentive plan in place, and using this salary, we can get to a, a market-competitive total compensation package at this lower salary range than what was recommended in the uh McGlockin report.
Peter, what, what, what's the percentage increase in, in this deputy CIO?
So these are a little bit higher, so it's.
Seems like it's about eight to 10%.
Yeah, so it's 10%. Yeah, it's, it's 10% at the, the minimum level. It's going to be, uh, let me just do the quick math here. Eight percent, eight, nine percent at midpoint, and it will be about just under eight percent on the maximum, so eight to 10%.
Thank you, and uh, it just, uh, as a refresher, a lot of these initiatives that uh we're, we're exploring in terms of value-add fall directly on the deputy CIO's desk. Um, and we've looked at some uh opportunities that we've been part of in closed session that are pretty material that he has led, so keep that in mind. Bill?
Yeah, I, I apologize. I, I've gotten so confused in this process, as, as many of us have. Uh, we have adopted the base salaries for the senior investment director and senior portfolio manager, is that correct?
Correct.
So if we didn't adopt this recommendation, the deputy CIO would have a salary less than, at max, the, and mid, and minimum than the Senior Investment Director. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct if nothing's changed.
Yeah. Well, yeah, unless we adopt. I'm going to make a motion to adopt the recommendation to increase the salary that is reflected on Page 5 for the deputy CIO.
Thank you, Bill. Is there a second? A move by Bill, seconded by Denise. Any further discussion or questions about that? Glad we caught that. Okay. Jennifer, can you take the role, please?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry, Gail.
I just wanted to, sorry, did I not raise my hand? I apologize. I just simply wanted to explain that the reason I asked to delay this piece, I feel like it's worthy of an explanation, was just so we fully understood the LTIP and how that would be part of the compensation. So I apologize if I was to blame for that confusion, but that was really my only intent, and I wholeheartedly support this change. So thank you for your patience with that. I thought it was an important piece of information to inform this decision.
Thanks, Gail. You have to buy drinks now, Gail.
Starting now.
Can we take the role, please, Jennifer?
Sure, Ms. Bradford.
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Hika?
She's not here right now.
Oh, she must have jumped out. Sorry about that. Mr. Prasan?
Yes.
Ms. Erdin?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto? Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Ruffino?
Yes.
Mr. Yamanaka?
Hi.
Ms. Controller Yi? Chakris and Keely, would you care to vote?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Jennifer, we're going to take another 10-minute break in a moment. Just wanted to let everybody know, the initial planning for these compensation items was for two hours. So we went 2 hours and 30 minutes. We knew that they would be complex. There's a lot of questions. Having said that, the execution of these items on multiple fronts could have been better. So when we do our self-evaluation from the meeting that Amy sends out, please put in your suggestions for improvement. Because even though it went two and a half hours, we expected it to go to two. We thought we could get it done in an hour. We were wrong with that assumption. But the execution could have been better on all fronts. So your input and feedback will be taken seriously to make sure we make some improvements. So let's take a 10-minute break, and then we can come back and finish up our work for the day. Thanks, everyone. Thanks. So we're back. The next item on the agenda for today is the Pension Solution Update and Information Item. Krishan, welcome. Good to see you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update for the Pension Solution Project. I hope you had a chance to review the detailed reports, so I will keep my update brief so we can have more time in the end for any discussion. I'm also joined by Graham Finley with Grant Thornton, who will provide an update from independent project oversight perspective. And we are also joined by CGI Leadership, along with our project sponsors, Ashish and Bill. So in general, Pension Solution Project continues to operate in a 100% remote environment since the pandemic started last year and is making forward progress in all the areas, though while navigating through various challenges along the way. Testing, data conversion, training, employee readiness are some of the key focus areas for us. The employer readiness team completed readiness widgets with all the reporting sources. This has now enabled them to begin their testing and preparation for FR2 as they get ready on their side with the new file format and the new pension administration system. So great progress on that front for sure. Data conversion, training, and change management are some of the other areas where team continues to make great progress to ensure project and organization needs are met. So a big thank you to these team and many other teams who continues to work hard and are passionate about getting this right. With respect to testing effort, as we have mentioned in the earlier board meetings, CGI continues to experience delays to complete various test effort. The progress is at a slower pace than what we expected. CalSTRS continues to make progress on user acceptance testing, but again, at a slower pace than what we planned for. We are finding more PIRs, we call it Problem Incident Reports, than what we expected. So higher number of PIRs create more work for CalSTRS in terms of retesting, as well as it creates additional work for CGI to fix it as well. So far, User Acceptance Testing, or UAT, team has executed about 3,000 test cases out of total 6,800, and about 200 test cases have passed. So in short, about 1/3 of our UAT test cases have passed at this point in time. Now, while we are making progress, we are also faced with challenges as well. So today, I would like to highlight three of the challenges we are faced with. The first one is around testing challenge that I shared earlier and in the previous meetings, that our progress continues to be slower than expected for various reasons. We are working with CGI to ensure we review all the remaining project activities and make sure we get a revised project schedule that is quality-focused, realistic, and achievable for the remaining Function Rollout 2 and Function Rollout 3 activities. At this point, it is quite clear that we will need more time to complete the work than what we planned for. However, the extent of impact will be known once CGI is able to pull all the pieces together as we are doing the estimation across all the remaining activities. The second challenge is around CGI staffing. CalSTRS is concerned with CGI staffing situation in the project to make sure that they have sufficient skilled resources to work on the project. Oversight and CalSTRS have shared those concerns with CGI Leadership, and they are working to address it. The third challenge, and the last one I would like to highlight today, is around COVID pandemic. So as mentioned before, project team continues to operate 100% remote because of pandemic. And while California is seeing a promising improvement from pandemic, offshore places like India, where CGI has large-sized team, have faced challenges. And they have experienced the impact of the situation there. So I appreciate hundreds of the team members on both CalSTRS and CGI side who continues to give their best to make progress while navigating through such challenges. In the end, I would say, we know we are making progress. We also know that we have challenges to navigate through. But we remain quite confident in our team's ability to get to finish line for delivering a quality solution, though it may take longer than what we planned for. So that's all I had as far as prepared debate goes. I will now invite Graham for him to share his independent project perspective.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. I wanted to share a few thoughts as some additional perspective to the information Krishan provided, as well as basically being a summary of the information in our written item. Really, there are two main topics I want to briefly discuss. The first relates to a point that came up at the last board meeting, and it really boiled down to a question, we know the project has an issue to resolve, but we wanted to be clear about whether what we have is primarily a quality issue or is it mostly a schedule issue? Or putting it another way, is there some kind of systemic issue with the quality of the software that we're discovering? And will that compromise our ability to get a successful, high-quality system? So we, along with CalSTRS, CGI, and Ivy and V, have been talking a lot about this over the past month or two. And after a lot of discussion and investigation, our conclusion is that we do not see evidence of a systemic quality issue with the underlying software. And then we don't see any reason why the system can't be made to meet all the acceptance criteria that have previously been defined. It's also worth pointing out that there would be no movements or proposals by anyone to change the acceptance criteria. And if you like, move the goalposts on what constitutes success. So the acceptance criteria for the system, you know, are remaining unchanged. Given that, the second topic is that it is clear that, you know, the time needed to complete testing and to get the system to an acceptable state is going to be significantly longer than originally anticipated. So the project does have a schedule issue, and CalSTRS and CGI have been working together on a process to reestimate the time needed to complete all the remaining testing work. That process is using the recent experience with user acceptance testing progress and productivity as a guidepost, you know, for what can be expected going forward. And in our opinion, the assumptions that are being used by the project are pretty conservative and realistic. The project does not have a projected date due today, but we are expecting that they would have a date or a date range to present to you at the July board meeting. One other point I wanted to make, which follows a little from something Krishan said, was while we continue to applaud CalSTRS and CGI's ability to keep making progress while working in a fully remote environment, over the last few months, it's become more clear to us that there are just some project activities that are simply not as productive when people can't be physically present together. In particular, we think there are certain elements of the testing process that have been less efficient than they could have been due to the remote work requirement. And that has been a contributing factor to some of the delays. We're hopeful that there will be some opportunities for efficiency improvements in a number of areas once we can have at least some portions of the team physically co-located again. So those are the points I wanted to make. I'll pause now for questions.
Thank you, Graham. Controller Yi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Krishan and Graham for the update. So is it fair that we can definitively say that the, that all of this essentially means that we're going to be beyond our go-live date of September 2022, right? So, and what's coming back in July is kind of a refreshment of the expectation of the timeline?
Correct. So the current go-live date for Function Rollout 2 was October or is October?
October, okay.
Yeah.
Twenty-one.
For the Function Rollout 3, it was, it is February 2022. So we do expect shift in both the dates.
I'm sorry, I thought September in my head. Okay. Got it. Okay. And then, so what does that mean from the employer perspective? I mean, what have we, what's the employer expectation, I guess, at this point? In terms of what all of these delays in testing means? And how does that affect employer training? And, you know, just kind of from that side of the project?
Sure. I can talk briefly about it. So as I was saying before, that as far as employer reporting goes, that piece of work remains, is on track in the sense that the employers have most of the functionality they need at go-live in a test environment for them to work in. So at this point in time, if we happen to have delay in the go-live date, what that essentially will mean is that employers will have more time to prepare themselves and their systems to get ready for the new system and the new file format. We already knew that some of the employers are not going to be ready for our planned Function Rollout 2 and Function Rollout 3 as far as a new file format goes. So this extension, if that happens, will allow us, that will allow more employers to get ready with new file format because there will be a longer time available for them to get their system ready.
All right. Okay. And then my last question is to Graham, and that is some of these, I guess for lack of a better term, is inefficiencies, I guess, that you've identified as a result of the remote work that has been taking place. How will that be addressed? I guess, will there be recommendations about how to? And part of this is also, we're approaching a point where possibly we will be back and working in person again. So, I mean, I guess, how are we to kind of process that?
Yeah, I mean, there's a series of, I mean, there are a set of conversations underway that I think some of the CalSTRS staff can probably talk to better than I can about, you know, plans going forward. But the project team itself, with CalSTRS and CGI, have been looking at a lot of the processes around testing and recognizing, you know, what things can be put in place as, you know, best replication of a working room, for example. You know, we've got people in a physical room, and how can you recreate that virtually? And they've done the best that they could, but to a certain extent, you just can't make it a perfect replica. And so there are areas where it's really that face-to-face interaction and the ability to, you know, just look over over a cube and talk to somebody immediately, that it's very hard to replicate virtually. And so those are the areas people are focusing on. But it's, you know, it's not an easy topic, right? Cassandra fully has a few thoughts to share.
Cassandra, I see that you're on screen, and you have your hand up.
Thank you, Cherokee Lee. We are looking at the transition of staff coming back into the office and have a timeframe that has been planned for the fall, a minute in line with a number of other organizations. But we do have also an intermittent strategy to start bringing those parts of the organization where we have experienced delays either in the deliverables of projects or there's, you know, some of the services that we are not being able to perform in a remote environment, such as our services to our members. When we have the ability to work in the office to a greater extent, we will be transitioning those people back sooner than other parts of the organization. So we're focusing on those areas first and to make sure that we can, you know, work on those products and delivery of services.
Thank you. Thanks, Harry.
You're welcome, Betty. Bill, you had your hand up, and now I don't see it.
No, no, I'm sorry. I still have my hand up. Okay. Well, first of all, I want to commend you for your resilience on this project because it is the project where the tire meets the road in payment of benefits and as such. The one thing that I would like to commend you on is that, Graham, you said something that's vitally important to me as a board member, is that there is no systemic quality issue that has arisen in this project because that would be a tragedy. You know, when you apply new technology to these solutions, you don't want to have a snafu. We've seen it in other areas of government, and it's not a pleasant sight. So I just want to make sure that that is your view, and it's the view of you, Krishan, that we have no systemic problems here. Is that in fact the case?
And that's the conclusion we've come to. And I should say that we've had on this process over the last couple of months where ourselves, CGI, CalSTRS project team, Ivy and V have all been looking at this question, recognizing the importance of it, collaborating on it, but all coming at it from a slightly independent view. So we all form our own sort of perspectives on it. And I think sort of uniformly, we're coming to a common conclusion that we don't think that's the root issue. Not to say that there aren't, you know, there's defects to be fixed, and that's going to take a while and so on. But that isn't the root problem here. And I think, you know, I can speak for pretty much everybody I've interacted with on the project, that I think the board's messaging over the last couple of years has been very consistent about quality is number one, and everybody's pretty much heard that loud and clear. And I don't see any sort of, you know, variance from recognition of that anywhere.
And Krishan?
Yeah, I would agree with Graham. So what I also believe fully is that that we will be able to get to the finish line in a quality manner. However, the challenge when we speak about quality issue is more surrounded by the fact that we are finding more defects than what we anticipated. And we believe that some of these defects that we are finding at CalSTRS could have been detected sooner, which were not, which is fine, but we are finding it. So the quality concerns are not about that there is a systematic issue, but it's more about that the number of PIRs or the defect we are finding is higher. And hence, both the teams have to work much harder and much longer to get to finish line.
Well, you know, time is always an important element, but getting it right is the most important element. So good that you're doing this. The one issue about time, Betty touched upon it in terms of the expectation of employers. And I think that that was well answered. But what about, is there any additional costs to CalSTRS by this? And the fact of the matter is that it's worth the cost to get it right. But is there an additional cost in this process? But is there an additional cost in this process?
I can, I can respond to that. You know, the, the time does have costs associated with it, but that's one of the things that we will be discussing with CGI as we work through negotiations on the, on the finalized schedule that we'll come up with. You know, we want to look at, we have a, we have a run rate, they have a run rate, and then we have a responsibility on who needs to deliver what in the schedule. And so that will be part of the discussion as we move forward. And when we get a, a schedule defined by July, then we'll talk about any costs associated, associated with it for us. And we'll talk about it with CGI and come back to you if there's any adjustments that we need to make in our budget.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Bill. We have Karen and then Gail.
Thank you, Harry, and thank you for the report. Couple of my questions have already been answered, but I just have, have one more concerning the CGI staff. That was one of the challenges that was listed about their turnover and about the CGI promise to provide some kind of a plan to mitigate the issue. What's the status of that? And, and is that a big worry for CalSTRS right now? I mean, do they have it under control, under control, where you feel like it's a little bit better? And, and we can kind of go on with the program?
Well, here is my take and Graham, I invite you to chime in and we have CGI leadership as well. So I would say, I, I don't believe the issue has been addressed yet. But, and, and we have situations where we, we need to get that addressed right now. So, so I will not say that the issue is not there anymore. It is there certainly. And what happens with these longer or larger projects is that since this project is going on for about five years now and, and it's likely going to take a little bit more longer, there is some natural attrition that happens. But in the last five months, what we experienced is that abnormal rate of attrition. So which is what we want CGI to address and stay on the top of it. Because if you don't have right people on the ground, any new schedule is again subject to, will be a risk again.
Exactly.
So I'll maybe make a quick comment, and I think Virginia is actually here. Virginia Williams from CGI is here. She, she can sort of talk to directly, but Virginia actually talked, and I talked about this very topic just yesterday afternoon. As a matter of fact, and I know she's got a, a response to the, the question that CalSTRS had asked is sort of under, underway. Sort of talk about what CGI is doing to, you know, respond to challenges around resourcing. So I don't know, Virginia, if you want to share a little bit of that?
Sure. So, good afternoon, everyone. It is true that with COVID and the opportunity to work remotely that, that these tech professionals have now a wide range of opportunities to choose from. So it's a hot job market for them. And so we do, we are not the only project, we're not the only company that is seeing this kind of attrition as a result of being able to open yourself to opportunities even across the United States and, and move to something new and perhaps a promotion and something exciting. We also have some of our workforce in India and you're all very aware of what is going on there. But we are remaining vigilant in our recruiting practices and in replacing the staff that are leaving. We have had a number of them leave and either through new recruits or by taking existing staff members who were scheduled to roll off and extending them, we have backfilled most of those that have left us. We've added even four new roles that we hadn't anticipated before. And again, we do continue to recruit for the handful of remaining that we have lost. But it is something that we have to manage our way through and remain vigilant on. We're holding to the new yet unofficial schedule with the staff that we have, but that's not, you know, entirely comforting to me. I need to make sure that we are continuing to prime the pump on recruits.
Can I ask another follow-up question then? So if, if you do have the recruits then, and then the, the hope is to return to office, what does that look like for the new recruits that may be hundreds of miles away when you actually recruit them? Is that also been under consideration?
It is a consideration and we know that we are returning to the office. So when we are recruiting, we are looking for folks who need to be in the office, we recruit locally. There are some positions that don't necessarily need to be in the office or don't need to be in the office daily. But to the previous comment where there are some efficiencies or some struggles because we're not working shoulders to shoulder in this environment, for those positions, I am recruiting locally.
Okay. And then that status report will be regularly given to the, the CalSTRS team during these next few weeks, months?
Yes, I am, I am preparing a report for them right now on the details of what I've shared today.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Gail, looks like you're going to closing comments and thoughts on this, or questions on this item.
Yeah, just to Mr. Finley, and I really appreciate all the work you've done on this. Your, your overall, your comments on page three of the write-up just talk about, you don't believe there's any quality issues, but there have been some areas are more concerning or challenging. I actually asked for a follow-up on this last meeting or, I guess, from February when we had this discussion. I didn't get a response to that. So I, I do think it's important that we have full clarity on, on what some of those concerns are. If it's, if it's a quality issue and then before the next meeting, I would expect kind of, you know, the new anticipated timeline after the negotiations with CGI as they continue, both in terms of timeline and in terms of costs. So those are three requests. And I, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Finley. I actually don't think it's on you. I think it's on our team and CGI. Both the, the quality concerns and the, you know, the beta versus reality, Ms. Williams, we asked this last time, there was no follow-up. And then timeline and then cost to Ms. Lichnok's previous answer. So if we could just make sure we have that in advance of our next discussion on these items, please.
I, I will say that there was some sort of conversation about the best way to respond to the questions last time. And I think we were, we were trying to address it through our item and the write-up we provided to you. And if there wasn't enough detail there, I think that's sort of a joint responsibility for, for all of us. So we'll, I will respond to that.
Certainly. And I'm always available for follow-ups. So if there were questions of how to respond, feel free to just reach out directly.
Cassandra?
I just was going to make a quick comment that we, we had been talking with CGI about what their response was. And we had asked Grant Thornton to validate the, the content because we wanted to make sure that it answered it to the detail that we thought that you had expected. And by the time we got that, you know, constructed, we asked him to just put it in the item as part of the response. But we'll make sure, I don't, I agree the timing wasn't timely enough for our, for what we would expect it to deliver to you and would like to have that done prior to the item itself. So.
Thanks, Cassandra. So before we close out, summary, we're not moving off the message in terms of quality, obviously, as Bill said, we've got to get it right, even if it takes longer. So it's quality, time and cost, it's essential. And we look forward to our update in July with the updated timeline as well as maybe a little bit more insight into some costs associated with that, as well as the requests made by Gail relative to more specificity. And perhaps some of those conversations will be more relevant in closed session if permissible. So we look forward to the update in July. Cassandra? You're on mute.
Yeah, sorry. Just one more comment. We will probably, we will have the timeline, we expect to have the timeline prepared to deliver to you in July. The costs associated with it and the negotiations on, on any impacts to our budget and CGI will likely take a little bit longer than that so that we're thinking about the cost impacts in September, but the timeline in July.
Great. Thanks for that clarification and level-setting the expectations. Thanks, Cassandra. Seeing no other questions or comments, let's move along to the next item, which is, it's item fourteen. Was it twelve? Feels like fourteen. Twelve. Jack, are you still with us?
I am. And Cassandra can join me too because she's really worked on this item for the next year. You know, I think there are two important things to point out before we get into the substance that Cassandra worked on here is a bit on structure. We are expecting an executive order from the governor around Bagley Keane. And we had a meeting this morning with our agency secretary to get some perspectives on that. I know there's still some discussion around when those ground rules around public meetings might change. I mean, obviously, there's just hundreds and hundreds of boards in the state that are impacted by this law and, and everyone's anxious. Also, and there are several bills in the legislature also pending that would allow some flexibility in these board meetings around video participation. So it isn't just about how the executive order changes. It may also be impacted by legislation in the coming months. So I don't have details when the, the ground rules change, other than we know the governor's office has been working hard to think about how to move back into the prior, the law that was in effect, but also with the, hopefully the new legislation with some flexibility. So that's one point to make. The second is most obvious from this work plan is you've got more meetings next year. This is a, this is a different approach to the board meeting. You have two offsites, one in October that you've already contracted for a location some time ago, pre-COVID, actually. We just pushed that forward. So that's all set up for you for October. And then it's an open question, what you'd like to do in April. And you could see that column is, is open on here as well. But we've also added a half day in there in January as well. So just note that the time involved is different, but you also asked for these meetings. Unlike this week, all the, the meetings would be limited to two days and not on a three-day schedule for the coming year. So hopefully we can honor that with the compression of the compensation committee into this agenda as well. So I hope that works out for you. Cassandra, was, I know you, you spent time on this. Was there anything you wanted to annotate for the board on here? Most of these things are the things they deal with every year. Maybe, maybe just talk about the strategic plan because that's new for this year.
Yeah, we're absolutely, we're in the process of constructing our new, a three-year strategic plan. We go through a lot of iterations and Amy McDuffie has already been working with staff. I think there's been interviews with the board and we will be working through that this year in preparation for the offsite in October. We will be planning to bring the strategic plan to the board for approval in March. And if there's any adjustments, we have time to make those adjustments in May for us to prepare the annual business plan from that document that next month. So that work is currently being conducted and we're, we're excited about incorporating all of the content that you have provided and other participants have provided for the plan.
Great. And Danielle and Jonathan and all the people that support you, we're going to go ahead and start to work on some, testing some options for you to be meeting in the boardroom and also to allow for video participation from afar. I mean, there are, it's complicated technology, to say the least. But on the theory that you will have more options available for you in meeting in the future, I think it makes sense for us to start that technology testing now so that you have the options when you make that decision that you want to come back physically to the, to the boardroom. I will add, the, the construction team is happy you're not in the boardroom right now because they are going to be pretty soon putting a gigantic beam into the building right behind your boardroom. So having you in this environment right now is, makes it the construction process much cleaner for the team.
Thanks, Jack. Thanks, Cassandra. Any thoughts or feedback? And process-wise, this is presented to us today and then it's formally adopted at the July meeting. So if board members have comments or questions or suggestions in between, you certainly can reach out to myself and/or to you and Cassandra with that input. I do hope that at some point next year, probably the second half of the year, so sometime in 2022, we do take time to reflect on this entire experience that we've all endured and gone through in terms of lessons learned through the pandemic about the organization, about the future of work at CalSTRS, what we can, what changes will be temporary, what are longer term, how we function as a board, changes that we've made. I do think it's deserving of some time for us all to pause at the appropriate time to look back on what we really learned from this entire experience and how do we come back better? And maybe change a few things. So we'll, we'll work on getting that appropriately placed, probably in the second half of the year. Okay. Then we have the compensation work plan. Is that, is Melissa going to, who's going to tackle that?
Hi, hi, I'm here.
There you go.
I, I think, I think we've heard the board's desire. This item is really just introducing the compensation work plan, which we know that some of the meteor compensation items are being discussed at the board level. So it's really just the staff's recommendation that for 21, 22, the board continue to subsume the compensation items within the regular board. Earlier during the comp items, there was a request to consider adding to the, what would be the board work plan is the request for a little bit more information on the investment services instead of opportunity review. And so I can discuss offline with the chair and the vice chair on where it makes sense to place that in the board work plan.
Thanks, Melissa. Any questions? Feedback? We'd like to just socialize at this point. Couple of items. As this item is being brought to, through the full committee, full board, perhaps the governance committee can weigh in on this as well. Issues around benchmarks that we've continued to wrestle with year after year, where we've talked about the complexity of the benchmarks, some inconsistencies that exist and the number that we have, to the extent it's permissible and it would be helpful. We can discuss later on the idea of putting together maybe two-member working groups that works on this issue of benchmarks with the consultants in advance of meetings and bringing forth some recommendations as opposed to trying to tackle those all with all 11 of us on a, you know, in person or on, on screen. We realize how difficult that is and tap into some expertise that we have on the board on that issue. So we will, I just wanted to socialize that with everyone at this point, that that's some discussion. Secondly, not for action next year, but I do think at some point, maybe information items around compensation, some, some trends that are taking place in compensation around sustainability that which gets measured, gets done. And how do we look at sustainability in compensation models? How do we look at diversity, equity and inclusion in compensation models? And finally, what role, if any, will the new hybrid work environment look like and how compensate, how does compensation play a factor in all of that, if at all? So there's some trends, three, three real big topics that are, at the appropriate time, just can, we can get educated on that, not for action for next year. So some thoughts. Joy?
Harry, you know, one additional item that may, may not require board action, but is related to compensation that maybe Melissa, you can just also factor in is related to the chair's comments about benchmarking and some of the discussion of that that's come up in the investment committee with some of the policy changes that have been considered. I understand there also may be other compensation impacts as a result of policy changes that we consider that are not necessarily benchmarking, but, you know, but that are kind of contained within compensation policies that are not, not, I don't think are managed by the investment committee or the board, but that are delegated to the CEO. So just, I think we want to make sure that actions that we take in the investment committee sort of flow through and perhaps just, you know, the, getting confirmation to the board about how those are being addressed. I think that would be helpful as well.
Thanks, Joy. I don't see any other hands. Thanks, Melissa. Which brings us to item 13, which is the consent agenda action items. Does anyone want to pull any of the items that are on the consent? So without objection, the consent action items are approved. So without objection, the consent action items are approved. Consent agenda information items. Anyone want to pull anything from consent information? Seeing none, without objection, those are approved. Items referred by the committee for board decision. Jennifer, I don't think there were any. Thanks, Jennifer. New business requests?
You had several for the compensation.
Yeah, we don't have to repeat them.
Melissa just did those.
Anything from earlier in the day?
I have one from item seven, the request to link the lump sum death benefits to some kind of data point.
Yeah, great, good catch. Yeah. Thank you. Seventeen is the draft agenda for, for next meeting. It's, it's printed in the materials. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments about that. If not, we'll come to item 18, which are opportunities for members of the public. Are there any members of the public that wish to address this at this time?
There are no members of the public, thank you.
Thanks, Samantha. Anything for the good of the order?
Can I provide a little commercial for Friday morning's governance committee?
Please do.
Related to compensation, just because Betty, Lynn and I met yesterday with Amy and, and our panel for Friday morning. So just a preview, because I know not everyone's on the governance committee, but you will want to come on Friday morning. I think it's, what, nine o'clock, 9:00 AM Friday morning? But part of the reason I raise it is just because of this compensation issue. And we've been thinking a lot about sustainability and how does that encompass all of what we do at CalSTRS, not just the investment side and not just Jack on the enterprise side. And so we're going to have a panel come and speak and address kind of how they view sustainability kind of holistically at their fund. And I think one of the issues we raised in the conversation was around compensation and benchmarks around sustainability. So come check it out and join the conversation. So, you know, non-governance committee members are welcome to join.
Thanks, Shannon. Joy, you're, you're leading tomorrow's meeting. Anything you want to let us know about tomorrow morning?
No, I don't think so. We are, we just check in before nine o'clock, and we'll be starting investment committee at nine.
Good, thanks, everyone. Okay, that brings us to the end of our day. Thanks, everyone, for a productive day.
Great job, everyone.